I hereby call the meeting to order. Now, what we have to do is say the Pledge of Allegiance. Kathleen, I don't know how you did this every time. I always get nervous and and forget the words. Is there anyone here who can help me with the Pledge of Allegiance? How great. Okay, come on up, please.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for Richard Stan. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those are our children from the Old Greenwich School. Now, you guys. Is there something else you guys might know what to do for us right now? Oh, cool. Let's go. Go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, Board of Education members and guests. First, I'd like to thank each of you for your service to all Greenwich Public Schools students. Second, I'd like to thank you for inviting the Old Greenwich School cast of Seussical to your meeting this evening. On behalf of our entire cast, we'd like to invite you to our performance on May 3rd through 5th at Old Greenwich School.
What a treat. Thanks, guys and girls. That was great. Awesome. Uh, now, uh, to, uh, some of our board business. Let's go to the consent agenda. Uh, I move that we accept the minutes, uh, from February 23rd special and business meetings. Do I have a second? Second, uh, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that passes. At seven zero, Karen, you'll be doing the accounting of that thing. Perfect. Six zero. Okay. Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming. All right, we'll see ya. Good job. Excellent. Okay, now we have the student and staff recognition. Uh, first of all, will be the Scholastic Art Awards recipients. Ms. Nixon?
The art teachers of Greenwich High School and Eastern Middle School are very proud to recognize our eight Connecticut State Scholastic Art Award recipients from the high school and three award recipients from Eastern Middle School. At Eastern Middle School, three students earned an honorable mention, two Silver Key Awards and a Gold Key, and the CAE Aarmini Best in Mixed Media Award. From the high school, two received honorable mentions, three received Silver Awards, one of which was also awarded a Gold Key and a Hartford Art School Scholarship, and three received Gold Key Awards, one of which also was awarded at Hartford, a Hartford Art School Scholarship. Gold Key works automatically, advance to national judging. In New York City, renowned creative professionals review Gold Key works from across the country, and jurors select work for national recognition based on three criteria: originality, skill, and emergence of a personal vision or voice. National awards will be announced on March 22nd. Now in their 100th year, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is the largest, longest, running, and most prestigious recognition program for creative young people in the United States. The awards have an impressive legacy dating back to 1923, and a noteworthy roster of past winners including Andy Warhol, Ken Burns, Philip Perlstein, Red Grooms, Truman Capote, Richard Avedon, Robert Redford, and too many more to mention. This year alone, nearly 2,800 students entered original works from about 145 schools in Connecticut. I would like to recognize the art teachers, Summer Merritt from Eastern Middle School and from Greenwich High School, Lisa Skoragney, Jamie Charles, Cheryl Iozzo, Shakaba Bennett, Ben Kiznel, and Liz Vasquez for their teaching and encouragement of all of our students, and especially tonight, our Scholastic winners. I would also like to thank Michael Antonocchio, wherever you are in the stratosphere, for helping with this presentation, Jason Goldstein, the principal of Eastern Middle School, and Ralph Mayo, the principal of Greenwich High School, for their constant support for the arts. Laura Newell, our arts coordinator, Tony Jones, and the Board of Education for their ongoing dedication to providing the very best art education possible for our students in the Greenwich Public Schools. As I call your name, please come to the front to be congratulated by Dr. Tony Jones, our superintendent, and Joe Kelly, our board chair, and remain here until everyone has been called up. And please hold your applause until I have called everyone up. Caitlin Quinn, EMS, honorable mention. Isabel Deng, EMS, Silver Key. Lulu Wang, EMS, Silver Key, Gold Key, and CAE Aarmini Best in Mixed Media. Stay up here, Lulu. Monica Brown Smith, the rest of Greenwich High School, honorable mention, digital art. Nicholas O'Brien, GHS, honorable mention, drawing and illustration. Julian Lujan, GHS, Silver Key and Scholarship and Art Portfolio. Lucia Rosetto, GHS, Silver Key Photography. Mateo Zatella, Silver Key Drawing and Illustration. Lujan Julian also received a Gold Key and Scholarship. Casey Tierney, Gold Key Photography. Amanda Wong, Gold Key Ceramics and Glass, and Joshua Day, Gold Key and Scholarship Art Portfolio. Okay, now you can clap.
Okay, now the Scholastic Writing Award recipients. Ms. Barry?
Thank you very much, and good evening all. Uh, as Ms. Nixon said, the Scholastic Writing Awards is the nation's longest-running competitive, uh, um, competitive event for creative teens. And from our region, which is Hudson to Houston, it's very competitive, we have 15 winners in the writing category. Uh, as Ms. Nixon said, the Scholastic Awards began in 1923. And just as you heard familiar names for art winners, uh, over the years, many notable writers, including Sylvia Plath, John Updike, Joseph Carol Oates, Stephen King, many other winners. I think you'll be reading some of our writers in the future. Many of our writers are home writing even as we speak. If you are here, I haven't seen any of the writers, but if you are back there, um, please stand so you can enjoy some of the line light, and I will deliver, I'll hand-deliver all of the certificates tomorrow. So, um, strap strap yourselves in because we have a lot of winners. Uh, we have Miller Fishbank, honorable mention for journalism. Alexandra Gazinski, a Silver Key for flash fiction. Chloe Henskey, honorable mention for critical essay. Kristen Jacks, a Silver Key for a short story. Hannah Klingbell, honorable mention, journalism. Alexa Laura, Silver Key Poetry. Ashley Malkin, honorable mention for three poems and a Gold Key for flash fiction. Ashley Malkin is a, this is not her first time winning. Belle Nichols, Silver Key for a dramatic script. Aubrey Niederhafer, Gold Key for a personal essay. Shreya Prabhu, Silver Key for journalism and a Gold Key for journalism. Shreya also won a Silver Key for a personal essay. Ainsley Sarbeck, Silver Key for a short story. Natasha Samant, Silver Key for poetry. Elizabeth Wallace, Gold Key for poetry. Hubu Zhu, Critical Essay, honorable mention. And Zi Yan, winner for the third year. Ready? Six honorable mentions for poetry. Ten Silver Keys for poetry. One so, one Silver Key for, where is, oh, one honorable mention for a personal essay, and four Gold Keys for poetry. Plus, Zi won a Gold Key and the American Voices nominee for poetry, which means for our region, she is one of five students for the region to be considered. They will choose one hasn't yet to be named to be the, um, the poet for the region. Pretty nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot to be proud of there. Greenwich School Systems are, is awesome. Uh, next is the Regeneron Science Talent Search. Uh, my friend Andy, uh, could come up here and talk a little of that.
Hi, everyone. How are you? Board, Joe, Dr. Jones? Um, I'm Andy Bermonte. I'm the, uh, science research teacher at Greenwich High School. Now, I could say I'm the research teacher for the junior innovators, for the middle schoolers, and that has been an awesome, awesome experience. Um, those were tough acts to follow, yeah. I mean, I was looking at the little kids and I, you know, I get to know these, I've gotten to know these two young ladies, um, quite well. And I was looking at the little kids and I remembered those pictures that you showed me of when you guys were that age. They could, wow, look at what you've done in so little time. Um, anyway, to the Regeneron business. Um, so, in late February, uh, Regeneron announced their 40 top students or finalists for the Regeneron Talent Search from the 300 scholars that were picked a week prior. Um, amongst those 40 finalists were two of our GHS, um, research students, Angelina Fogarty, or Angie, as I know her, and Ambika Grover. Uh, Angie was selected for her work entitled "Rapid Visual Detection of Illicit Substances in a Variety of Environments via Competitive Aminew responsive Fluorophores." Uh, and Ambika was selected for her work entitled "Design of a Novel Dual-Functioning Tissue Plasminogen Activator and Factor 11 Inhibiting Anticoagulant Therapeutic for Rapid ischemic Stroke Treatment." I'm out of breath just on those, right? For a change, these young ladies are going to tell you what they did, which really takes the pressure off for me, but before they do, uh, Angie and Ambika represent the eighth and the ninth high school, uh, finalists in the last 15 years from the nearly 50 scholars that we've had at the same time. This places GHS Science Research, the program alongside the most prestigious science high school, specialized schools, public schools, you name it. Um, being selected as a, as a finalist in Regeneron places these two young ladies in the company with so many talented young scientists that have gone on to become leaders, including 13 Nobel Prize winners, 22 MacArthur Foundation Fellows, and more. So with these visionaries, Angie and Ambika share their love for scientific discovery for the most profound reason, and that's their desire to apply their innate gifts of technological imagination, creativity, and persistence to help others. Uh, I'm so incredibly proud of these two young ladies. So for their, for their troubles as finalists, they won $27,000, something like that? And I am proud to tell you, I mean, the cat's kind of out of the bag because it was in the paper today, but Ambika was only, uh, was that two days ago, right? Two days ago was selected as sixth place in that competition, and her, her winnings totaled $82,000. She promised me lunch, so I'm, I'm waiting for that. Anyway, so ladies, come on up. And, uh, I think they, maybe they queued up your little poster and you could talk about what you've done, so. Uh, Angie, you want to go first? All right. I hope you like white.
My gosh, what an introduction. It feels so special. So I'll try to keep this short and as easy to understand as possible. Um, I essentially created a color-changing sensor that's responsive to amines, which is a class of macromolecules. And my vision with, with this research was to apply it as a sensor for the detection of difenohydramine, which we commonly know as Benadryl. This can be used for users who are at a party or a bar to allow them to rapidly test their drink to test if it's been spiked with any drugs that could help, uh, an assaulter to engage in drug-facilitated sexual assault. So in short, I use two fluorescent dyes, a green fluorescent dye and a red fluorescent dye. This green fluorescent dye is specifically reactive to the amines compounds in those drugs, and that leads to the quieting of the dye, whereas the red fluorescent dye is unaffected by this, and that allows it to continue to fluoresce, um, even in the presence of those drugs, and that creates the visual red to green color shift. I also had to test this with a variety of different additives because, um, if you were to test this in practical usage with a variety of different cocktails, it had to be pH and color-stable. So I've added mechanisms to ensure that it's able to continue to fluoresce properly in a variety of different environments. And lastly, to extend this research, um, because it's not specific to just difenohydramine, applicable to a variety of other amines, I've tested it with pyral. This is an amin found in the breath of marijuana smokers but absent from that of cigarette smokers, and this allows it to be put into practice for use as a marijuana breathalyzer, similar to current alcohol breathalyzer tests for those driving under the influence of illicit substances. That is my very short summary, because I have a week's worth of makeup work to do. All right. Hello, everyone. My name's Ambika. So I want to start by, before I get into the exactly what I did in terms of my research, I just want to start with a really quick introduction of what strokes are and specifically what an ischemic stroke is. So many of you may have heard, uh, heard of the term strokes. You may know someone who's been affected by a stroke. Um, and an ischemic stroke is a type of stroke in which an artery becomes partially or completely blocked due to the presence of a blood clot or a thrombus. And this basically restricts the movement of oxygen, glucose, and other valuable nutrients we need from reaching our brain. And so as a result, within a few minutes, a patient can have life-endangering, um, lack of oxygen reaching their brain. This can lead to disability and is oftentimes, in nearly half the cases, fatal to the patient. So our existing medicine to treat this disease was approved by the FDA in 1996, and it's known as Tissue Plasminogen Activator, or TPA. But there's a few shortcomings that I found when I started my research journey, which is that it doesn't localize to the site of the blood clot, which means when a patient gets this intravenously, it freely circulates throughout the bloodstream. And I also realized that we don't stop something known as the coagulation cascade, which is the mechanism by which a clot is actively rebuilt in, uh, in real time. So in essence, there are two problems in treating strokes. The first is that our therapeutics don't localize to the clot site, but we also don't stop the mechanism by which that clot is rebuilt. And those are the challenges I wanted to resolve in my research. So to do this, I engineered this nanoparticle microbubble-like structure, um, which basically has peptides that are able to localize to the site of a blood clot, break it down using TPA, and then use a factor 11 inhibiting anticoagulant, which basically means we're stopping this cascade by which the clots are actively rebuilt. And so to verify that this microbubble structure I engineered had worked, um, I created in vitro vertical channel gel systems, which mimic what a clot would look like in the lab. And I also drew my own blood to generate blood clots, um, and to simulate that in real human blood conditions. So in essence, this research holds promise for breaking up blood clots in the case of ischemic strokes, but can also be applied to other diseases like heart attacks, um, deep venous thrombosis, and any conditions in which blood clots are quite prominent. Um, thank you so much.
I don't know about you guys, but the hairs were standing up on the back of my neck about being proud of the little bit of contribution we do up here on the board to the school systems and the products we put out. So I just, wow, Andy, that's great. I just, I got a really good feeling about what just happened, so thank you very much for that. Okay, is Lil here? It's now time for the GEA to, to speak. Sorry, that's right, you guys. Student Government, we have, uh, Student Body Vice President Mitch Goldstein. Mitch, it's your turn to speak.
No, it's, it's jaw-dropping work that they're doing there. It's really impressive, actually. So good evening, everyone, board members and meeting attendees. Like, uh, Chairman Kelly said, my name is Mitch Goldstein. I am the Student Body Vice President this year. I want to start by addressing several of the items on the action agenda for tonight. Firstly, as I have repeatedly said, I cannot express students' excitement about adding a linear algebra course. The official class will allow students to advance their knowledge in niche areas of mathematics and help prepare them for more advanced courses that students will take in college, all while keeping them in the classroom setting rather than having them take the course online. Secondly, I want to thank, I want, excuse me, secondly, I want to say that the GHS Student Government supports the approval of the new entranceway plans. Although these plans are less extravagant than the original ones, it's imperative that something is done to the entranceway to ensure student safety at GHS. Next, on behalf of all the seniors, I want to thank Dr. Jones for recommending June 15 as our graduation date. I know many seniors and especially senior parents are eager to learn the official date for graduation. However, regardless of the date, I know that this day will be extraordinary. Back at GHS, the Student Government has been working closely with the food services staff. And I want to applaud Mr. Nannarello, Head Chef Nico, and Food Production Coordinator Jessica Caposa for their dedication to serving the students. I truly cannot express how fantastic working with them has been. They are incredibly receptive to student feedback and have done an incredible job of improving food quality in the Cardinal Cafe. Some highlights of the cafeteria include adding cultural foods, which have helped diversify the menu. Additionally, they plan on replacing one of the school's sandwich bars with a salad bar, which I expect to be widely popular with the GHS Student Body. On a different note, with Black History Month coming to a close at the end of February, I want to shed light on a specific, on a significant student concern. The GHS Diversity Awareness Club and its advisor typically organize an energetic week in the middle of February to celebrate the diversity of our community. Daily announcements are made, and optional assemblies are held each day for students. However, due to staffing challenges this year, only a handful of events occurred and announcements were rarely made. Speaking of staffing challenges, it's interesting to think that the district has not considered hiring a diversity equity and inclusion officer to handle matters like these. In future years, I hope that Diversity Awareness Week during Black History Month will be as significant as it once was. On behalf of the Student Body, thank you all for your time. I look forward to continuing to work with the board throughout our final four months of the school year. I now pass the microphone over to Student Body President Isabella Giga.
Thank you.
Isabella, straight from rugby practice. I hope I didn't weigh you out today.
I actually got hit in the face today, so a little sore. Um, good evening Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the board, and meeting attendees. I am Isabella Giga, the Student Body President at Greenwich High School. In the long month of March, students have found themselves pondering on the following school year. Considering this, GHS Student Government has set out the election packet for the 2023-2024 school year. We have decided to move forth with our newly organized, um, structure, given its efficiency, and we look forward to new leadership. In addition to elected positions this spring, we have students, um, applying for an opportunity to become class reps in the fall. Beyond this, seniors have applied for their senior options on school links are beyond excited for the May 15th. Internship and projects are an excellent way for students to get real-world experience and pursue their interests beyond school. Though signups were low before the March 15th deadline, students turned a corner and submitted them on time. Since the end of the school year is coming fast, the senior class has begun prom planning, reaching out to commencement speakers to, to prepare for graduation. Furthermore, the senior class officers have planned activities to excite students for the remaining dates together. We appreciate the collaborative efforts between XCOM and GHS Administration to ensure that there are feminine products in the girls' bathroom. We began with bathroom, uh, baskets of products glued to chairs, but we have started transitioning to permanent dispensers that we are very excited about. Providing access to feminine hygiene products is essential for promoting menstrual hygiene, management, and supporting the needs of girls and women. Therefore, we thank you. Moreover, the GHS Therapy Dog has been a topic of interest recently. Our student gov, our student resource officers and the PTA have shown unwavering support and recognize the therapy dogs can positively impact the overall well-being and academic performance of our school. They can help create a supportive and nurturing environment that promotes learning, growth, and emotional well-being. We hope the correct steps are taken to soon welcome, to soon welcome home a new furry friend at GHS. Finally, our school partnered with the Anti-Defamation League to facilitate Names Day for our freshman class. They engaged in insightful presentations, participated in meaningful conversations, and reevaluated our efforts to be an ally. We, as a school, are doing our best to combat bullying and discrimination, but we can always do better. Bless you. As always, thank you for this opportunity and for your time here tonight. I look forward to speaking to you all again in a month's time.
Before we lose some of our students, uh, do we have an update on the hockey game that's going on right now? Anyone know what's happening? No? Okay, maybe if you can find out, that'd be great, and we could bring everyone up to date. The boys' hockey team is in the semifinals of the state championship this evening.
Joe? It's Karen. I do have an update. The unfortunately, uh, we're not, uh, we're not successful in their, their, uh, their game. I think they're down, like they lost five now, nil. Yeah, five nil.
Well, okay, well, thank you for the news.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, Lil, how do you follow the announcement of the loss of the hockey team? I'd like to see you do that, please. Uh, the floor is yours. Lil, you can talk now.
Okay, I was waiting to get unmuted. Not something that I'm used to. All right, so Chairman Kelly, uh, Board of Ed members, Dr. Jones, um, first of all, uh, I want to say, people know me, if I have something important to say, I like to be in person. Unfortunately, I cannot be in three places, um, this evening. Um, but my first place, the rugby team from Texas that's playing Greenwich today was in the room next door to me, and I went in the room and, uh, spoke with them. So Joe, do you have an update for me?
Do I have an update for you? You spoke to them, and unfortunately, the Greenwich High School rugby team lost yesterday. They did not prevail. It was a, uh, uh, the, uh, team from Texas was very confused at that white stuff falling from the sky. They were unaware of what it was.
Yeah, I, the parents told me, so thank you. Uh, I will continue now. So, uh, back when I was hired in 1983, uh, Ernie Fleishman was our superintendent. Often heard him say, "If it's good for students, then it's good for Greenwich." Also, when I first became president in 2003, my mentor was Joanne Zama, uh, a distinguished teacher at Greenwich. She also used to say to me, "That which we tolerate, we accept, and that what we accept becomes the practice." I say this because I know there's lots of construction projects going on in, in the town, and I'm not going to beat a dead, dead horse here. I'm just going to be brief on this. But why is it that every budget that comes But why is it that every budget that comes the way of the town, whether it's the BOE or school construction, is always cut to bare bones? We need to do better. Our students deserve the best and our community does. Can we please end this madness? Please support all the budgets that come through. Next, I was very excited yesterday. I spent twelve hours up at the Capitol, was there for the news conference, where over six hundred teachers provided written testimony to the legislators, urging them to pass the comprehensive bill containing key recommendations. There were one hundred and sixty-seven speakers who presented in person to the legislature. I was one of them, among with the other teachers. The education committee is considering two significant House bills, six eight eight four and six eight eight one, that would increase educator salaries and address other critical barriers to teacher recruitment intentions. This landmark legislation would reverse decades of policy that have led to teacher attrition, shrinking teacher pipeline, or working conditions. And listening to the speeches, it's not just about teachers, it's about parents. It's about special education. There are a lot of good things that will help not only teachers, but boards of ed. Some of the examples are the, which I think this is a big one. The State Board of Education Department is one of the legislative laws is that they're going to have advisory members for the State Department of Ed. Ten of those members total, five will be distinguished teachers, past distinguished teachers, and five will be teachers appointed. This is important to districts and teachers. Having teacher representation on the State Board of Education is so important because you will have people with real world implications who are in the classroom and have classroom practice with new initiatives that are, that are, I'm sorry. Lost my page here, sorry. It's important because the people up at the State Department of Ed aren't current in the real world, what's happening in the, in the schools, the hands-on practice with technology, and having a teacher advisory when they consider new initiatives and having the discussion before they're implemented will save districts lots of money, frustration on teachers' part. For example, the CTSEDS onboarding was a disaster, technical glitches, and initiating the, initiating certain programs like the, the reading program or other programs put unburdened financial distress on districts that don't need to have that program and it just doesn't fit. So I thought that was a big positive thing for that. There were laws to help with, it's all through the, the state of Connecticut and the country, plans to help with financing and helping teachers stay in the program. New teachers have all, graduates have all these extra test costs, trying to find a way to help support districts to pay parents more. We have, we have a sub shortage, so a lot of good things are in that bill. And I, I'm honored to try and work on a lot of those committees and give testimonies because this is, this is a collaboration that, that the, the state and the teachers' union can help, you know, districts and teachers. Lastly, I did notice for tonight, talking about our budget on Blaze does his presentation. I'm going to say this again, in the, in the presentation, I noticed there's one point six million of available grand dollars that will expire in six thirty twenty-three. Now, if you don't have a place to spend that money, and I hope you don't give it back, I am going to say again that it would be nice to give teachers and parents that work during the COVID because there is a legislation bill that will be moving forward, but it will not deal with the people that currently work during the COVID over these last two years. So think about it, show teachers they are valued and they work as they do respected, our parents too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lil. Okay, now it's Francis Wu-Nobe's turn for PTAC. Francis is working together with us to try to organize people to march on the St. Patrick's Day Parade on Sunday down Greenwich Avenue. So far, we have about two hundred people from the school systems who have signed up. So more than a mirror. Francis, welcome.
Hello, this is Francis Wu-Nobe, mom of three GPS kids and the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three president of the Greenwich Parent Teacher Advisory Council. As the fifteen PTAs who make up the Greenwich PTA Council head into nominating season, I want to share my PTA journey and why you should consider a PTA role at your school or at the district level. My first roles were helping to promote summer reading and stapling international night passports. I then moved up to handling handing out ice cream tickets to co-representing remote school families. I absolutely love working hand in hand with my fellow parents for the benefit of our kids. I'm delighted to share my time and talents to making our schools the best they can be. I have met so many incredible super volunteers, moms, dads, working, commuting, doing similar at your schools. Please join your local PTA today and thank you so much for volunteering. Turning to hot topics in tonight's consent agenda, PTAC continues to stand with our Greenwich Public School families and advocate for full funding of our school buildings. We will continue to press for full funding until the capital budget is passed. We appreciate everything the Board of Education has done to do the absolute, to, to advance the capital projects at Central Middle School, Old Greenwich School, Julian Curtis. And we call on the board to remain unanimous in continuing to represent the best interests of our public school families and the Greenwich community. It was all of you who had already spent months of thoughtful deliberation determining what's best for our kids. There is no reason to reopen the debate on the specifications or the building project scopes and put the state reimbursement deadline at risk. More importantly, it puts our kids at risk. Now, as Joe said, let's march proudly, hand in hand at Sunday St. Patrick's Day Parade. I'll be there with my kids, knowing that we each did our part together to support our kids. In closing, please join PTAC virtually on March thirty-one in honor of Earth Day to hear Julie DeChamps share all the great progress the Green Schools team has made. Details and recordings of prior meetings are posted on the PTAC website and see you on Sunday.
Thank you, Francis. It's now time for community comments. I didn't skip anything, did I, Kathleen? Oh, good. All right, Dina Orso is first. Is she online? Oh, there you are. Catalina Moore is next.
Good evening, Mr. Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education. My name is Dina Urso, and I'm one of the co-presidents of the CMS PTA and speaking on its behalf. My co-president Jen Behatt and I have been attending the building committee meetings virtually and have followed the conversations concerning the appropriate size of the new building. Regardless of how many square feet it ends up being, the CMS PTA strongly advocates in favor of three things. One, that the quality of the educational programming must not be compromised. Two, that the administrators and teachers must be prominent participants in the conversation. This is the group of people who know more than anyone else what a middle school the twenty-first century needs for this town. Please continue to hear them as their input is integral, especially during these formative stages. And three, the building committee, the BOE, and the BET must work together and proactively to keep this project on track. June thirtieth is approaching at warp speed with each week that passes. It is not a sign of weakness to be the first to open the lines of communication. Please do not let egos or red tape cause any unnecessary delay. Our children in our community need all groups involved to work together as quickly and as efficiently as possible. In closing, the PTA is very appreciative of all the volunteers involved in the process. We are more than willing to help by educating and advocating in any way that may be helpful in seeing this process through to the end. Thank you for your time.
Catalina. Next is Courtney Murphy.
Okay, good evening, Chair Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the board and meeting attendees. My name is Catalina Morda. I'm an old Greenwich resident and mother of two children at OGS, one in preschool, one in fourth grade, which is probably the youngest person in the room right now. So thank you to my son for handling this. I'm here today to speak in support of a much-needed, much-overdue project, the OGS renovation project. First and foremost, I'd like to share my surprise, and in fact, how appalled I was as a newcomer last year to discover that OGS lacked ADA-compliant accessible entrances ramps or an elevator, violating not only the law, but also compromising the fundamental values of equity and inclusion in public education. As a foreigner doing my PhD sometime ago here in the US, I remember vividly remembering how accessible things were, schools, public buildings, even national parks. And that was amazing and really one of the admirable aspects of this country, in my opinion. To find out that our neighborhood school must turn away children with mobility limitations for lack of appropriate access was mind-blowing, to say the least. Secondly, and something that troubles me very much, is the lack of a recommended secure entrance allowing direct visibility of visitors from the main office. I confess this might not have ranked high in my radar while living abroad, but it does rank very high here, and it needs to be done now here, and it's urgent. Next, where should we go next? Are the basements where my daughter spends her school day can flood can be encroached by raw sewage and poor air quality? During previous pandemic measures and still now when there's COVID-positive cases, classroom windows must be open, even when it's really freezing outside for lack of an appropriate HVAC system? How in very hot days, children and teachers must endure high temperatures and potential high ozone levels for lack of such a system? How should kids and adults with asthma cope with this? And how can all our children focus, learn, and thrive under such circumstances? What are we asking of them that we would not tolerate in our work environment or our homes? How much must teachers and other staff still overcome to do their job properly? Lastly, as a scientist familiar with climate research and projections, I cannot avoid thinking what lies ahead. Sooner than later, we will have more floods, more frequent and more intense storms, heat waves among, among other events. Bringing this building up to standard fire code regulations, protecting it against storm surges and flooding, installing a proper HVAC system that can maintain safe, healthy, and comfortable environment to our students and staff is not a luxury, it's a basic requirement. Furthermore, it's also an investment in a local community, not only in their school and in the value of their properties, but as a safety aspect. Think, for instance, in the case of very likely blackouts or shelter, shelter emergency needs during these potentially extreme events I mentioned. For this and many other reasons, I wholeheartedly support the OGS renovation as well as the socially and fiscally responsible decision, decision to move ahead as swiftly as possible. That means now. With this, and on behalf of my children as well, I would like to thank the Board of Education for its previous unanimous support of this project. And I would really encourage you all members to continue to do so. It's really important. I'd also like to thank our principal, Jen Ben-Sivengo, for the wonderful job at keeping this school running as efficiently and as smoothly as possible under these circumstances. And to thank the OGS Building Committee for their tireless efforts and informative actions. They are ready, and I hope the BET is ready as well. Thank you all. Have a very good evening.
Courtney, your turn. Roger Rosendahl is next.
Good evening, Chair Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the BOE. I'm speaking tonight as a concerned parent, asking the Board of Ed to reconfirm its support for the updated funding of the Old Greenwich School renovation and to ask you to advocate for the BET to support this necessary project. My son's in fifth grade at OGS and was part of the Seussical Performance tonight. I also have a daughter in second and another who will be in K at OGS next year. When we were moving out of the city eight years ago, we looked for a community that, among other factors, was walkable, diverse, and had good public schools. We've been incredibly happy with the decision to date, thanks to the heroic leadership of Jen Ben-Sivengo and all the teachers who make the magic happen every day, as well as the leadership of Tony Jones and the BOE during the challenging COVID years in particular. Thank you for all that you do. I know I'm speaking to the choir and the many critical needs of OGS are well-known at this point, but I'd be remiss in not mentioning that in first grade, the teacher for my daughter had to create a diaper in the doorframe to avoid sewage from coming into the classroom. And the lack of accessibility is not just about an elevator. It prohibits students with disability or injury from attending. It makes assemblies with grandparents or other guests impossible. Related to security, with mass shootings at schools across the country, our children are accustomed to lockdown drills. We no longer allow our children to enter the door closer to their classroom, instead having the central door open to avoid potential security breaches. However, with our school right off I ninety-five, we still do not have a secure entrance with sightlines to the office. And the new plans would remedy this and other critical issues, including air quality. So my requests are as follows. The OGS Building Committee is ready to start construction in spring twenty twenty-four if construction funding is provided by the BET. If the BET does not provide construction funding, please support their request for incremental pre-construction funding so they can keep moving forward. I've heard that the BET and BOE are asking the building committee to explore the cost of new construction while they're creating the schematic design for the OGS renovation. I'm a bit concerned that this ask from the BET is coming so late in the game, over two years after a feasibility study was conducted and a year and a half after the BOE approved the OGS ed specs. Construction costs have gone up significantly, and we need to face reality. It's unrealistic to think that a new construction school would cost the same as a renovation. It's important that the BOE and BET move forward on this quickly, keeping up with the building committee and support the OGS community. Our school has a strong, consistent enrollment of four hundred-plus students, and OGS residents are tired of this project getting kicked down the road. I hope you'll support the OGS project tonight, and the BOE will do whatever it can to advocate for the project and keep it on track. It's time to make the facility of OGS match the quality of the education, not only for our children, but for generations to come. Thank you.
Okay, Roger. I saw him earlier. Steve Waco, did you see Roger? Okay, well, we can always invite him to speak at another interval of the evening. Okay, now we're off to the superintendent's report. That's you, Tony. Fantastic.
Just a couple of items tonight. I want to start out. And first of all, say, so I don't forget, a very special thank you to the Board of Education. This is Board of Education Month, and so we're we honor and thank you for everything that you do. And I mean, you are paid just so well for all of your service, zero, and the amount of time that you spend in meetings. But I don't even think necessarily the public understands how much you do outside of these meetings just to get prepared for tonight. So thank you so much. And this is on behalf of everybody in Greenwich Public Schools. There is a chocolate bar to help you get through the evening and another little small token of our appreciation. I also want to say congratulations to all of our students who have their work in the district art show that's at two nine nine Greenwich Avenue. It is still up and you can still stop by. So if you're down there this weekend for the parade, you know, you might be able to stop in. Also, a special thank you to Mike Antonaccio, who was very swift and had been working on updating our strategic plan website. And so I know there was a wonderful letter, thank you, Dr. McEntee Anthony, in the paper. And the website is up for the community, so people can see, see the important work that we're doing. We all, we did submit our waiver to the Connecticut State Department of Education. And when I was meeting with our state representatives at Western, it was shared with me that they thought they were going to get forty waivers from across the state. They got well over a hundred. So we don't know what the timeline will be, because it's going to take a lot longer for them to actually review the waivers. And we will be having that on our agenda for next month as requested. So they're working on that presentation for you right now. And last but not least, I do just want to say, we did have Representative Fazio, we had Connor Arzinho, and then Representative Curry, who is chair of the Education Committee, all were onsite, spent several hours at Western. spent several hours at Western touring the school. They got to see classrooms. And probably one of the best things was there was a panel of four of the avid students. And just listening to how avid is impacting our students at that age was phenomenal. There was one young lady and I'll just briefly share. She was talking about, you know, just she didn't know anything about going to college and these are middle schoolers. And she didn't know that you had to pay to go to college. She didn't know that you really should look at colleges. She didn't know what was available. And she was actually saying she came from a family where she will be the first, you know, to ever go to college. And so she just around the dinner table, didn't have anybody to help her have those conversations. And now not only with her, but her family, they're able to do that. So I know the Alliance has been an enormous partner for us, but the work that we are doing, our representatives were just so impressed and a special thanks to Representative Curry, who does not represent us, but is Chair of the Education Committee, wanted to see the great work going on in Greenwich. So we've had a wonderful couple of weeks showcasing just so many wonderful things that you saw tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions? Yes, Michael.
Tony, I don't know if you can clarify this or not. There was a comment made during by the GEA president about an enormous sum of unspent money. Is there any clarity you could provide on that?
It could be two things. I'll have to follow up, but we don't have an enormous of unspent money. We're watching every penny, but there is a different grant that actually was flowing through for, but it wasn't for like ARP funding. It was more for our new special education program. So I don't know if that's showing up anywhere, but it's not that sum of money. So I think it's just the way the report looks right now. Probably what we can see is encumbered and what is maybe not spent yet, but we're still waiting on items. No, we are going to spend that money.
I was worried about that. I was going to ask later on. Thank you, Mike, for bringing that up. Anyone else with a question to the superintendent? Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll move on to our individual reports. Our officers, committees and liaisons. Now, most of us or all of us who work on building committees will have a time to speak, so we don't speak now. Any other things that anyone's working on and they'd like to update us on? Kathleen?
Hi, okay. Greenwich Alliance. Julie was good enough to send me some updates, so let me just read it here. Reaching out grant applications are due on March 24th. Applications must first be approved by Dr. Caravilla. Dare to Care, a longtime Alliance Grant, was featured on the front page of the Greenwich Time on Tuesday, March 14th. Dr. Alina and Fabian, sorry, I'm not going to say that right. Wa hosted a parent-child retreat at North Street School calling glowing and growing to teach mindfulness, yoga and craft making centered around making things to calm oneself down. Patrick Briggs, avid Eastern Director, spoke at PTAC Public Session and also led two professional development sessions at GHS on Monday. Avid is much more than executive functioning skills. Patrick will be at Western Middle School on March 28th and all board members are welcome to attend and learn. Trivia challenge. Thanks to everyone who played and are bid on auction items. The event raised 30,000 for Greenwich Public Schools.
Thank you. That's great. Anybody else? Michael?
So the Strategic Plan Committee met a few weeks ago, as Dr. Jones mentioned, and the website's updated. And you'll please, everybody saw the message from the Board of Ed as a whole in the local paper. The, I know it was at least in one and one of the others yet, sent it to all the local media around just advertising the plan as was adopted last month by us. The other thing that the Strategic Plan Committee talked about was, we call the board as a whole charged us with revising or taking another look at the board goals. We're continuing to work on that. We're hoping to bring that back next month after another strategic plan meeting to, for the board's consideration. We also talked a little bit about the opportunity I mentioned last month to host a Research Ed Conference at some point next year. This would be an exciting professional development opportunity to host and international speakers, a nonprofit type setting, really help put Greenwich on the map. I'll continue to have conversations. Dr. Jones and I is working on possibly an Alliance Grant to help fund that. The, and I have meetings, a meeting with Research Ed on Friday, where we're going to give some more details. We should have some more details, bring the board around those efforts next month. And if we move forward, then maybe form a community committee to champion that effort.
Michael, you've been busy. Thank you. Excellent. Anybody else? I will jump in with a quick, Laura?
Just a, just a short update from the distinguished teacher awards committee. We have to pick up our packets from Jonathan over there at Havemeyer. So that's where we stand. We'll be looking at some hopefully great, great nominations for our educators.
Great. I will update myself now. I've been working a little bit with the United Way and finding out the great work they do. And the important work they do before they kind of reach our schools has been amazing to me. I didn't realize how much they actually do. I know that Tony works closely with them. And Dave Raven had explained all the stuff they do and it's just very exciting and I'm learning more and more. I went on the radio program just recently with David, talking about how we can work together and how he can or help, or I can help him help raise private funds to invest in our children. So I think it's a great project and we'll certainly have to support them as best we can. Also, we, I am working, I'm on a committee with Ralph Mayo, with Fred Camillo and our athletic director for the Parade of Champions, which we are going to be having in June 11th down Greenwich Avenue. Ralph Mayo is trying to decide what level of success of teams will be marching in this parade. Certainly, the state champions will have that opportunity. It's up to Ralph to decide whether it's, it's going to be other awards that have been achieved. But we have a lot of great teams in the athletic program. Certainly, everybody knows that I've, I was very involved in the athletic program for years. So I'm very happy to, to support such a parade of our kids down Greenwich Avenue and honor them. We, we hope to make this on Ralph's suggestion. We hope to make this an annual thing. We're speaking to the Old Timers Athletic Association to possibly work as our partner to help us run this every year. So there's lots of good things to, to bring people out and celebrate our good stuff at our schools. Also, as Francis already mentioned, that I'm very excited about the, the massive number of people that would be marching with us under the Board of Ed banner, all these different schools will be marching in the St. Patrick's Day Parade. We will be meeting at 1:30 on the side of Havemeyer Building on the upper parking lot at 1:30. And then we'll march across or cross to the town hall where we begin the marching of the parade. All children with parents, teachers, everybody, Board of Ed members. We certainly, Laura had made up our Board of Ed sign last year, our marching sign, which we'll be carrying again proudly down Greenwich Avenue for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Anybody else? Oh. Karen?
I just have a comment regarding the Parade of Champions. I think it's a fabulous idea, but I would, I'd highly stress that it not be just athletic teams. But as your point in talking with Ralph, we have such great champions around the, on, in all levels, whether it's in the arts and music and as we saw tonight with respect to all of our wonderful scientists, et cetera. And I think it would be exclusionary just to have it directed at sports, but rather have, find a way to incorporate for all of the champions in all of the disciplines throughout the high school, if that's what we're looking at.
It's a great suggestion. Our first committee meeting is on Tuesday. I will bring it up in the committee meeting. And if you're available, we might take other members to the committee and maybe you can participate and maybe bring that as far as later on as it's received in the committee. Is that okay?
Yeah, happy to help.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we will then move off to action items. All right, we're going to start with the JC Building Committee. I believe I've got to make a motion to bring this to the floor for discussion. Is that correct? Okay, good. But I make a motion to approve the retention of Antonazi Associates as the architects for the Julian Curtis School Project. May I ask, first let me introduce Bill Kelly. Hold on, I've got to get a second. Okay, thank you for the second. Good thing she's here, otherwise I'd mess everything up. Bill has been a Board of Ed member for eight years. He was a BET member for four years. He has served on multiple building committees. He has been the Chair of many building committees. He is, he's kind of a good guy too. I've been working with him. He's all right. So Bill, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. Dr. Jones, I can answer one of your questions for you. The amount of time that a Board of Ed member dedicates to the school system was actually quantified when I was on the board in about the year 2000, 2001. And we calculated 600 hours a year is what a Board of Ed member does, contributes to the community. The Chair does a bit more, just so you know. It's my pleasure to be here. My name is Bill Kelly. I'm the Chair of the Julian Curtis Building Committee. And I've gotten to know Julian Curtis, the school system, the school and Trish McGuire, the principal, who is fabulous. And so we're seeing what we can do for Julian Curtis. We, we had about five or six architects coming for the walk around, but they were scared off a little bit by the phasing of the project because it was kind of convoluted for them. We ended up however, with Antonazi Associates, who Chairman Kelly and myself and the entire committee is very fortunate to have. They're, they're very good. They've got strong recommendations. And we would like to meet with them tomorrow and get started. So we have a meeting at 7:45 AM tomorrow. And I would seek the approval of the Board of Ed in order to enter into negotiations with them so that we can get a contract done and get rolling on Julian Curtis. And as I said in my notes to you, we would start off with the 1 and 1A, which is the elevator and the ADA. And then hopefully if the security in the front entrance is approved for 800,000 in May, we would then supplement and the contract and get that rolling. And we also have enough funds in our architectural design funds to start to look at the cafeteria. And then we could come back to you with real plans, real ideas. And then our job is to, you know, work with the BET and the Board of Ed and the community and see what we can do. So that's it.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions for Bill?
Thank you.
Karen, oh, this one. Almost, you almost got away.
No, 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 that's fine. That was a great idea, by the way. I wanted to tell you.
Oh.
The Parade of Champions, when you see the two, oh me, Jesus. Schemic strokes and I'm like, I'm sitting here going, my God. But it was always, it was always whenever I was on the Board of Ed, it was the same thing. These kids would get up and they'd just blow you away. That was probably the best part of being on the board. It was really the communication with them and the fun.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. No, 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 it's fine.
Microphone and I just go.
Trust me, Joe has the same problem.
It's a Kelly thing, you know, we were working on.
So my, my question to you is, was this the only firm that didn't shy away from the fact of the phasing? Or did we have other options?
No, this was the only firm who put in a bid. And so we were going to, we were thinking about coming back and rebidding, but they were so good and they were so knowledgeable. We decided to go with them. We think they're, we strongly recommend them to you.
Have they done any other work for Greenwich Public Schools?
Yeah, they have.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, they have. Okay. So they know, they know the system, which is if you don't know the system of the town of Greenwich and how to get things passed and stamped, you're done for. And they do.
No, those were, that was my, my two questions. I noticed that the other references here for the other districts that they'd worked on.
Dan Watson has worked with them and he likes them.
Okay.
All right. He put his stamp of approval. Really, if he had said no, or he had wavered in any way, you know, Dan, Dan, Joe and I are tight. We working together. So.
Now I'm worried.
You should be. It was sort of like, I'm a hair here and there, sort of like that, I think.
St. Patrick's Day tomorrow, guys. Not yet.
Okay, anybody else for a question about the JC project? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Thanks, Bill.
I actually have. Can you see it?
Is that God? No, Karen? Oh.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I just had one quick question because in the document that you provided to us, the phase, phase one through four, you said it was a total of 411, 250,000. And then the bid was 416, 800. Can you just explain to us what the difference between the, you know, what else was included after the 411?
No, we're just, we're just dealing with the number 411. That's all we're going to deal with and they know that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have any more, I don't have any more money for them. So.
Okay, that's, so, right. So they submitted a bid for 416, but we're going to be looking towards the contract for 411.
Yeah, we're not going to do a contract for 411. We're going to do a contract for the phase one and 1A, which is only going to be about $99,000. Then we'll supplement it with phase two, which will be about another 60,000. So we'll go with that. We'll go incrementally until we have buy-in from the BET or Board of Ed as to what we can do. And we will certainly come with you, to you with a plan. So.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I can vote in favor. That's right. I could, yeah.
Okay, let's call the question. All in favor, raise your hand. And Cody and Karen, how do you vote?
In favor.
Karen?
Yes, I vote in favor.
Thank you. And Bill?
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, see you tomorrow morning, Bill. Thank you. Okay, next for efficiency sake, I've been trying, I tried it out once on, on Michael and it worked very well. I am going to transfer my superpowers as a board chair to Christina to run the, the entryway discussion. So, so transferred.
Thank you, Joe. I'm going to put, we have two motions on the table, slightly revised wording on one of them. So, and Mike Antonaccio, I'll send it to you. The first motion is that we approve the Greenwich High School Secure Entryway Project. Final plans and specifications dated February 27th, 2023, as corrected for Scribner's errors and the addition of an ad alternate for glass at the security desk and professional cost estimate dated March 15th, 2023, to be submitted to the Office of School Construction Grants and Review for Approval to Advertise to Bid. May I have a second? Mr. Kelly, I'll give it to him. And I'm going to make the other motion just because they're all kind of linked together. The second motion is that we approve the educational specifications for the Greenwich High School Entryway Project, originally dated March 27th, 2020, approved by the Board April 24th, 2020, as revised March 15th, 2022, approved by the Board on March 14th, 22, 2022, and is further revised March 16th, 2023. May I have a second? Ms. Stowe can do that one. I know these are very wordy and lengthy, but as we've learned through, through the high school entryway process, you have to be very technical when you're dealing with the state in terms of the things that are said. So I'm going to turn over the microphone, so to speak, to our building chair, Mr. Steve Walco. Just since we're recognizing our building chairs this evening, just want to, Steve's an amazing building chair. He should chair all building committees. I can say that. He would not agree. He served on the RTM for many years. He's had a long service at the town. On the RTM, he chaired the BOC. He served on the BET for a decade, including was a chair. He's been our state representative. And this is not his first, not his second, but his third building committee. He served on Ham Amphilton, Ham Am, were you the Chair of that?
No.
Okay, but he did chair New Lebanon and he's the Chair of the High School Entryway. So, and he runs a great meeting. So if anybody's really excited on a Wednesday morning, they can listen in. So Steve will fill in on the project.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are here to hopefully finalize the process before we head to the state and then hit the ground running to go out to bid for a GC and an owner's rep. There was some commentary tonight about, you know, sort of town of Greenwich and lack of funding. This is not the case for this project. We certainly thank the Board of Ed, the BET, the RTM for their support of this project, both initially and also when we came back for additional funding some months ago. As you all know, this is a smaller project, but still one that is going. As you all know, this is a smaller project, but still one that is going to meet the desire and the ed specs. It is a security vestibule. We have given you renderings as we have right now as to what it will look like both outside and inside. Certainly, if you look at those renderings, there is a pop and there is a pride in the front office now. If you've been there recently, you can, I think you can agree with me that there is no pride or pop at our front main office at Greenwich High School. I call your attention, though, to the very last rendering, and that is the security desk. There is a little bit difference of an opinion, not only with the committee, but with the Board of Ed professional staff. In the base bid that we're going out with, we are not including security glass for the security desk that is within the vestibule. There's a difference of opinion whether or not it's too institutional versus the safety factor, which is obvious. We have included it as an ad alternate, and so if there is money, and if you all tell us that that's a good idea and give us some direction, we would certainly include it. I think it's, it doesn't need to be decided today. It's certainly down the road, but something that, that you all should consider. And if you have an opinion, let us know. If you don't have an opinion, we'll make the decision as the time comes. The other ad alternates is to glaze the front side of the glass quarter if you're facing this new vestibule to the right. And the other ad alternate, the third one, is additional benches and additional hardscape to the landscaping. So it is not for landscaping, it's for hardscaping. That would make the, the front circle a little bit nicer. We already have 30,000 from the PTA, so we'd like to thank them for that. But there's still some work to be done. We're fairly confident that we're gonna be able to hit this budget because we used the budget of the estimates that were provided. In terms of round numbers, the total construction estimate that we have just from our architect, not from an estimator, is about 2.5. Engineering and architectural costs, about 275. Owner's rep to reimburse for the state of 40. Owner's rep for the project, 137. We have included a contingency of about 10%, and so you're looking at a budget of rough numbers of about 3.28, and our total allocation is 3.5. So notwithstanding the fact that we have a 10% contingency, we still feel like we're, we're in a good place. We would go out, we would, we were supposed to meet with the state on the 22nd of March. If we do that and we are approved within, let's say, two weeks of that crossing our fingers, then we would be able to go out to bid in beginning of April, get back bids, award a contract by mid-May, and then have shovel in the ground as soon as the students leave the building in June and do most of the heavy construction as much as we can through the summer months. With that, I'll entertain any questions if that's okay.
Yes. Are there any questions from Mr. Walco? Mr. Kelly?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Steve. That was very nice. I just wanna make something very clear because I didn't participate in any of the meetings and had no major discussions, but we reduced the scope of this project.
Correct.
Okay. Have we changed the level of security that this project will provide to the school by going from one presentation to now this reduced scope? Is the security the same?
The security has not been compromised by this. As I said previously, though, this is the main security issue at Greenwich High School. It does not solve all of the security issues at Greenwich High School. But this project adheres to the ed specs and addresses the security concern as, as equally to what was in the prior project.
Thank you. That's.
Yeah, I might add to that, Joe. It really, it's not a reduced scope. It's a reduced size. Scope is the same. So the only item in the ed specs that changes from the last version to this is purely going from 2,200 to 1,100 square feet because the state's gonna want that to match up.
Thank you.
Anybody else with any questions, Karen or Cody?
No questions for me.
I don't have, I don't necessarily have a question, but to your point, I do think that it would make sense at a later Board of Ed meeting to put the question of, of security glass as an agenda item because the, I think it's, I think it's a valuable discussion to have.
It's not cheap. I'll tell you that. All right. So I'm gonna call the question. I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna do it as two motions, since I made it as two motions. So on the first motion, which is the drawings and specifications and cost estimates, motion one, can I, all in favor, raise your hand. Cody and Karen?
You can put me down as abstaining.
Cody's abstaining. Karen?
This is Karen. Yes.
Yeah, so that's 701. Thank you. And on the second motion, which is just the revised ed specs, where the one changes the square footage, all in favor, raise your hand. Cody and Karen?
Name for me.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, this abstain again.
Abstain again. And Karen?
I'm voting yes.
Okay, so 701. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And you could, when we're giving those superpowers, you could pass them, pass me it off to Michael.
Our next agenda item is the old Greenwich update, which will go to Mr. Mercanti and Dr. Mercanti Anthony.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, counselor. So I wanna make a motion, and again, this is much like Christina's, slightly amended from in the agenda. There's an extra sentence here. So the, the first motion, to get this on the table, the Board reaffirms its commitment to move forward on the old Greenwich School renovation project, understanding the updated estimate project costs that the building committee provided last week of, or last month, excuse me, of 39.35.9 million if in fiscal year '24 and 38 million if in fiscal year '25, and recognizing that the building committee will provide updated cost estimates based on a schematic design for renovation as well as the cost for possible new construction. The new addition, not on the previous agenda, should funding be postponed, the BOG requests 1.08 million in fiscal year '24 to complete the pre-construction work of the old Greenwich Building Committee.
Like just a point of origin, just say be postponed. I think you wanna be specific about what year when you say.
Postponed in fiscal year '24. Thank you. Then the second motion, a motion to direct and authorize the OG Building Committee to start the municipal improvement process. Do I, so those two motions, and I see Mr. Kelly seconding both motions. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Okay, the motion is seconded. So with that, let me introduce, bring, invite back the old Greenwich Building Committee Chair, James Waters, no stranger to the Board of Ed. He was just here last month. The, but you recall, last month, we had a conversation about the different funding structures, and obviously, there's been some conversations since then, since then about old Greenwich. So we wanted to bring him back to answer any questions before entertaining this motion. Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you. I think this is actually the third meeting in a row, and hopefully, I can give you a break for a couple of months.
We'll see if we can get your candy bar.
But I was just gonna say, but don't hold your breath because we're moving forward diligently, but quickly. I'll be brief. The purpose of the motions before you tonight are straightforward. First, we're asking you to confirm that we updated the project estimates for you last month. You'll recall, this update is solely related to incorporating realistic cost escalations from 2020 to present and a more standard 20% contingency for renovation. Second, we're asking for your support for moving the OGS project forward as quickly as possible, even if the BET will only provide incremental A&E funding in the coming budget. The building committee has concluded that we need an incremental 1.1 million, 1.085 million. You've seen the number before, in A&E funding to complete the pre-construction process. Third, we're asking for your support for moving the OGS renovation into the municipal improvement process. We're starting the schematic design process, aiming to complete it by June. At that point, we'll have professional cost estimates on our chosen design, and we'll share the design and those estimates with you. I'm hopeful we'll find savings from the estimates discussed last month. In parallel, the OGS Building Committee will be putting together a rough estimate on a new construction OGS. I've talked with our architect and owners rep about it, and we'll get our engineers and construction manager involved. This will be additional work that I guess will come out of our current A&E funds. But we'll give you a picture at the relative cost of new construction versus the cost of renovation as, as per schematic design. When we provide these numbers to you this summer, I hope we can make a good and expedited decision on which path to take. It's clear to me, sitting in my seat, that the old Greenwich community and the building committee do not want us to slow down. I could talk more, but I'll reserve it for questions. Thanks for listening, and thanks for having me.
So a couple of questions. So I saw the flow of emails this week and maybe even last regarding this cost of a new school versus renovations. So what do we have an estimate of what it would cost for the current crew to put together what the cost of a new school would be? And what are they going to base it on? Simply a rebuild of the news of the current school and its formation? Because it'd be a little hard, I guess, to say what something would cost when you don't have ed specs for the entire school. So I'm just curious as to how they're going to be able to create that.
Yeah. So this is gonna be a moving target for us. I think the big, one of the big things from my perspective that we need to have a look at is, you know, just a rough ballpark of school size, right? I think that's gonna be an important driver of this. You know, we have some comparative examples that we can use. We certainly know how many students and classrooms are at the current OGS. And I think it's kind of why I call it a rough estimate, where we're not gonna have ed specs. But our architects have done this kind of project before, where, you know, you're, it's sort of conceptual in nature. So it's a great question. The others, the other thing that's on my mind is if we were to head in that direction, how does, how do we, how do we do that in a flood zone? Because we're gonna have to raise, it's gonna be significant amount of site work. We are in a FEMA AE flood zone. So, yeah, that's gonna be, I, I think we shouldn't underestimate what that is. And the other thing we have, we have, we do have, I think you probably did see in that flow of traffic, we, we do have, like, I mean, we have the cost of new construction in the state of Connecticut on a dollar per square foot basis. You know, it's something like, over the last few years, it's something like $734 a square foot. So I know that's being discussed in other projects. We did, we did the homework. We did the research. We did the math. We know those are the numbers. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see. We'll get, we'll get construction, construction manager involved to talk about, look at constructability. We will get people to sort of leverage their professional hats to give us real numbers. So that, that's kind of how I'm thinking about it. I don't have it exactly all mapped out because obviously, you know, my top priority here is what you guys have authorized us to do, which is the ed specs, and to get our schematic design done, we will get that done.
Yes, Mr.?
Thanks. I think it's much of what I said at the last meeting, right? And I was a little bit surprised to see this back here because I feel like we all sort of showed our support at the last meeting. And my only concern with this motion is that I don't like the option of the 1 million. I think that this has been, I mean, I know I'm now been on the board the longest. We've been talking about this for a very long time. The OG community deserves this building as fast as possible, and to me, it's just flat out wrong to delay it another year. I'm not sure I have any other options in front of me, but I just wanted to express that. That's my issue with this motion. I think it should be 30, you know, 5.9 million now in fiscal year '24. Thanks.
Thank you.
I share your sentiment, Kathleen, that I think, you know, we talked, we talked about it a lot last meeting, that this project is ready. It's ripe. It's moving on a very quick path because its scope is very defined, and we've got a great building committee, and it's, it's very clear this is what the community wants. I think, I don't know if in feasibility, a new building was ever discussed. I don't think there's an appetite for it in the community, not even getting into the, a dollar, if dollars were a wash, the community doesn't necessarily want it. So, but I think to satisfy the BET, I understand their concerns. So I think, James, I applaud your willingness to work with them. But I'm with Kathleen. I, I'm, I'm okay. No, okay. I think this project should move forward in fiscal year '24. I don't, I can't say it any clearer than that. However, I can make that request, but I don't control the purse strings. And I don't want this project to be left without the architecture and engineering money that is necessary. And if the motion is the way to get the BET to focus on both the project and its preparation and its readiness, and with the understanding that we've communicated very clearly to them that we want this project to move forward with all due speed. And, but we understand that if you're, if the BET makes a choice not to go ahead to fund the project next year, we do need money to keep it moving in 1.1 million.
Can I just chime in one thing? So, you know, we've, we've had some discussion about this, about this. Look, I, I share your sentiment. I just wanna, I wanna move it, move this forward as quickly as we can. We are ready. One thing that I do wanna say and just make sure, I think you guys are all tracking on it, but it's probably appropriate to say it in, in a sort of this forum is, you know, if there is, there's some, some decision to be made in June or summer timeframe, and, and we decide to shift course, the building committee would certainly urge the Board of Ed to proceed with haste and, and to proactively manage the potential for controversy about this and be prepared for it. And, and with historic building advocates, it's a 121-year-old building. So it, my, my view would be, if we do get to a point where we shift focus, I, and had already been anticipating construction funds in next year's budget, I would encourage this board to move forward with haste in next year's budget as well. There's no, no, you know, no reason that we need to wait on ed specs. You know, we can, we can move forward. We can help you with that. And, and I think we will have this, a year from now, we will have this, knock on wood, ready to go.
So I did wanna address a couple of points, one being on the feasibility study because I was part of that committee with respect to the feasibility. No, we did not find, determine, or want to look at what a new school would cost because the overwhelming support from the community was to keep that school. That school is iconic. It has a lot of stories. It has, and it serves the purpose for that community, but it needs some renovations. It needs some additions. It needs some issues to be addressed. And I think that you would have all of the old Greenwich community and probably the likes of many other communities who walked down that Sound Beach Avenue and look at that school and say, are you kidding? Why would you ever get rid of something that is just so darn beautiful? And something that is such a piece of our community and defines what old Greenwich is about. So the short answer to the question is, we didn't entertain it anything beyond, well, do we need a new school? And the answer was, no, we just need to fix the one that's here because that's what they want. And so while the BET has requested this information, and I think it comes along the lines of other schools, you know, New Lebanon was built for something a little bit more. I get it, but I just think it's the wrong choice. I personally think it's a waste of time and money. And I would, I strongly support the ed specs that we had approved a year and a half ago now, and we worked really hard to get them. I like them. I helped formulate them. So I think that they, they are, they are what we need. On the second point, I strongly encourage and think that old Greenwich is ready to go, and I would be sad to see it fall in the next year. But I do think that we are at a point for this board. But I do think that we are at a point for this board to really consider what, not only what our priorities are, but what message that we want to send in October. Or was it, sorry, maybe it was December we voted on this. Was it December? October. So sorry. October, you know, we, we knew at that time and had conversations, we put both schools in our capital plan. And what I'm referring to is old Greenwich and CMS. Because we didn't have enough information at the time to understand where we would be. And we didn't want to put one in versus another because we didn't want to lose the opportunity for one of those schools to go forward, particularly if the one we chose wasn't ready. And we knew that two schools wasn't going to get done. And we took a sense in the meeting that night, realizing that we needed to reevaluate and make a decision as a board as to what our priorities were with respect to the, what our priorities were going to be with respect to do schools once we had more information. Now, do we have perfect information at the point, this point in time? No, we don't, but we do have more information and I think we're coming to a point where we as a board need to make a decision and do our job. We know both schools aren't going to get built. And I don't feel that we as a, an elected board are doing our job by simply saying, well, we want both, so we'll pass it to somebody else. We know it's not going to happen. We need to make a decision. And I think we're at a point in time where we need to do, make that decision, do our job and send a clear message. CMS, whether it's gets done this year or the following year, we'll have to decide right now. If I look at all the facts before us, and I know Ms. Costin's going to speak soon about where we're at, but we've heard what's going on and we know what's going on. In my opinion, old Greenwich is probably in a much better position to move forward and get done than CMS is at this point in time. We're going to talk about CMS coming forward, but I do think that CMS is a huge project and we need to do it right. And I'm really afraid that pushing forward on CMS, because we have so many issues to deal with there, is going to be rushed and it's not going to be done right. And the problem we'll run into is the fact that it may not, it most likely won't be ready. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. Ms. Costin will say it will be, and I know that. I hear you, Laura. I'm very concerned it won't. But I don't have that much of a concern as it relates to old Greenwich, and it's not because of the failings of one board versus the other. Those building committees have worked very hard and I respect them. They are volunteers. They get paid zero too, and I, they meet more now than these, this board does. I get that. But I do think we have, you know, a day of reckoning is coming and we need to make a decision. I fully support old Greenwich going forward and I see that as the more viable option at this point in time.
I, I see Karen online and then we'll go to you, Scott.
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to say, you know, I, I think we, we have had a discussion in the past and saying how much we fully support the needs of the old Greenwich school and community. And, you know, I, I, I fully support this going ahead as it is. I recognize what Karen is saying in, in, in some regards, but we are doing what we are be, what we have been tasked to do as a board. We've been tasked to support our schools, our students and provide them with appropriate learning spaces. That's what we're doing. We're putting those forward. We've been putting them forward for quite some time. We're at the point where we really are, are ready, ready to go with this school. And it's not really, it's, it's unclear to me why we're being put in a position yet again and being asked to place one school's needs ahead of another. We made it clear they're both in need. It's, and it is for us to be able to put those things forward. You know, to, to, you know, to be funded and to be supported by, you know, members of our community. And so I think that's what we need to do. It's not, it's not about one school versus another. It's about both schools that need to, to get this work done and we need to start moving forward. We can't keep pushing this off any longer.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify, I don't think there's anything, I certainly am reading anything in the, in the wording of the current motion that is putting one school in, in, in front of the others. So just want to clarify.
No, I, I was just simply referring to, you know, Ms. Kowalski's comments about, you know, one project versus another. And so that's why I just was saying.
I didn't say that either.
No, we were just, I know, I'm just saying in, in reference to, I, you know, I don't have the exact words, but I just wanted to say, I just don't want to be putting this comparing one versus the other. That's all. I think it's important. We support both.
Laura.
So I just want to say that our vote for our capital request was our voice. It was my vote of support then. It is still my vote unchanged in support now. I think we have the means in this town to do both. And, you know, with approximately 93 million at last glance in our rainy day fund, let the BET look the old Greenwich community in the eye and try to justify a vote against funding for this school. I think I am all in on CMS, JC and old Greenwich. So that's my vote of support.
Go ahead, Christine.
No, no, I just, I think we, we, many, I think we all feel the same way. I think to Karen Hirsch's point, our role is to advocate for what we believe our students need. And we, I think we all agree that our students need both facilities. I don't think it's our job to tell the BET which to go first because I think we do want both. And it's incumbent upon them to find a way to pay for it. I think they've created a construct of a capital ceiling. I know this is the biggest capital budget in the history of the town, but these are exceptional circumstances. And I think there's years of deferred projects. Not, not a single one of our master facilities planned projects has been done. So that's six years that we've been waiting. And so maybe when, after you wait six years, you have to kind of ante up. So my view would be, I think it's fully appropriate for us to ask for both. And that's what I, I believe we should do. And I think the one thing that's good about this motion is it confirms to the BET that we accept the new figures on old Greenwich now that more vetting has been done by the committee and a more realistic number has been put out there so that should it come back down the road, we can say that we acknowledge that that's the cost of a renovation based on our building committee. So I, I think that's helpful.
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. I said this last meeting, I'll say it again. I love all our building committee children all the same. I would like to call a question.
Fair enough. The, I have some comments on CMS, but I don't want to, but that's the next agenda item. So I'm going to hold my, my, my comments there because I do think there are some, some questions there. But as far as this motion, let me just reiterate what I think I'm hearing everybody saying, and I certainly agree with. Like the wording of this motion is designed just that, to try to move this project forward as quickly as possible. And I think there is, I'm hearing pretty much unanimity on the board that we all are believers in this project. So the question's been called. So all in favor?
Motion one.
Motion one, excuse me. All in favor of motion one, excuse me. One, two, three, four, five. Cody?
Yep.
Karen?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that is seven opposed. So seven, zero, one. All in favor of motion two around initiating the municipal improvement process? Oh, in favor? Cody? Is it? Yes, it looks like. And Karen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight oh. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Michael, could you pass those magical superpowers over to Laura?
Can I yield to the, the, the honorable gentlewoman from, like a building respect there?
I want the opportunity to be chair.
Oh, there we are. Well, before I say anything, I would like to turn the floor over to the marvelous Tony Turner, our building committee chair, who is a fantastic public servant. We always give their bio, right? He's got a long bio, but I will say he has been a distinguished member of the Board of Estimate and Taxation. So he knows the shoes in which the financial board sits and also a serving on the Energy Management Advisory Committee as well as our building committee. So I'm going to turn it over to him and we do have some architects ready to present as well.
I think, I think I have to say thank you, Madam Chairman. I was gonna, I was prepared to say Mr. Chairman, but now that you're chair in the committee, it's Madam Chairman. If, if we could have Amy Samuelson unmuted. She's going to be, she's part of the architectural team and she's going to be presenting just a few slides with a view of giving, giving everyone on the board and Dr. Jones an update on, on our project. As you all know, we have been meeting in the building committee since July of last year. We've made a tremendous, tremendous amount of, of, of progress in a variety of areas. Sometimes we meet once a week, sometimes we meet four times a week, just depending on what we, on what we need to get done. So with that, I want to be sure to thank my fellow committee members for all their work. We have an upcoming evening meeting and it just, it just continues to go on and we're trying to get a, a lot of things done within a certain amount of time because the, the, the clock is, is running as someone has already alluded to, alluded to earlier. So with, if Amy could put up the first slide, what we're going to do is just recap for you. And I'm going to hold for 30 seconds. Well, here we go. What we're going to do is recap for you, the Community Engagement Forum slide program that we presented to the community last Wednesday, I think it was. And, and just give you a, a, a sample of some of the, of some of the slides and some of the work that we've, that we've done up to this point. If we can go to the next slide, as you probably know, we've hired three organizations to help us in this effort. The Construction Solutions Group, which is our owner's rep. The SLAM Collaborative is our architect, better known as SLAM. And Turner Construction, no relation as our, as our construction manager. CSG has been in place since October of last year. SLAM was hired as our architect only 10 weeks ago now, nine weeks ago, sorry. And Turner Construction has been on the job now as the construction manager only, only for two weeks. And if we could go to the next slide and then I'm going to turn it over to Amy to give you some examples of, of the work that's been done by SLAM and where we are right now. One of the things I want to be very sure to point out to the committee is our, is our timeline. And if I could go to the middle of the slide, you can see that construction is, is slated to begin in the summer of next year. Excuse me, with approximately 20 to 21 months of construction, which will bring us to February of 26. And you can see in the spring of 26, the intent is to have the building completed with move in. So we're, we will be fully set to go again in the fall of 26 with a view of doing demolition for the current building over the summer and into early fall. Again, not to spend more time on the slide, but you can get a sense as to, as to the timeline with the highlight around, around construction. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Amy Samuelson. Amy is the project director on behalf of SLAM for the project. She has, I think, four slides to, to show you, to bring you up to date with the idea, at least currently of where the building is being envisioned on the property and what we have in mind from a traffic management standpoint. And then after that, it will of course take any questions. So Amy, it's all yours.
You might be muted.
Might be muted.
Tony, this is Cap. I think her phone needs to be unmuted.
Okay.
Calling in through her phone.
She's a panelist, but she has to get in u- using her, using her phone. Is there?
What are the last three digits of her number?
Eight, nine, three, six are the last four.
Thank you. Sorry for that confusion, everyone. Thank you, Tony. SLAM Collaborative is proud to be working on this important project for the town of Greenwich. We've been looking very closely at the site parameters so far, the early in the design phases. Primarily, that's what we've been working on in addition to the verification of the Ed spec, which is an ongoing process. In terms of the site, we are, if someone can advance, please. We are looking at all of the neighborhoods in the surrounding area and all of the potential and existing locations to bring traffic in and out of the site. So that was a quick overview. This slide is showing our traffic study, which was approved Tuesday at the latest building committee meeting. We are anticipating that that traffic study will take place between March 27th and April 6th. The Subcommittee for Communications for Central Middle School will be sending out detailed information about that at their, after their meeting, I believe tomorrow. So the traffic study though will take place looking at all of the circled intersections that you see here, which are the two existing curb cuts for the existing school and the intersections at the, at both ends of Indian Rock Lane. We will also be looking at the intersection of Orchard Street and, and Sandwich Road, at Orchard Street and Coach Lamp Lane, at Orchard Street and Sinoe, and also at Sandwich Road and Fairfield Road. Realizing that this site and in particular Indian Rock Lane, where the entrance and exits are today, are highly impacted not only by CMS traffic, but by traffic for the high school and for some of the private schools nearby. We're timing the traffic study to make sure that all of those schools are in session during those traffic counts. There will also be three, I believe, traffic counters across the road. Those will be in place for 48 hours during that same timeframe. So those will be at Indian Rock Lane, at Sandwich, 900 feet north of Indian Rock and at Orchard, just south of Coach Lamp. So we'll be taking a look at, at all of the information and data that comes from that traffic study as we move forward with the site plans. We also have been studying those site plans for a potential location of the new building. Next slide, please. We have a couple of different options on the boards with more to come. Certainly, these options will be changing based on the traffic study analysis. Or I should say will be will be supplemented by that traffic study. The building footprint that you see represented on this site plan is one potential option of many. It, it is just to show a scale and location. We are looking at putting the school on the existing fields tucked close to the hillside and potentially even built into the hill to take advantage of some of that slope and allow for the majority of the site, which is very flat to be the, the location for the fields. So really trying to maximize the opportunities for fields and for parking as we tuck the building in under the hill. So you can see in this option, we would be utilizing one of the existing curb cuts that enters the lower parking lot of the existing Central Middle School. The intention of the very long driveway that you see from that entrance point up through to the new two separate parking up through to the new two separate parking areas is really to give a long length for queuing for that parent drop-off that we know right now takes place by queuing right along Indian Rock Lane and then even turning up Orchard. So we want to get rid of all of that traffic on the road and make sure that all parents are, we're providing enough space for parents to queue on the site instead. So that's the intention for the long driveway. And you'll see that then at midpoint, the driveway splits. In this case, to the left, the bus loop and to the right, the parent drop-off and some additional parking in both of those areas. Both would drop students off along the center spine that is pedestrian only. And all students would have the same entrance point to the school. In this case, it's at the knuckle between the two wings, the L shape. And it would be centrally located in any building scheme that we come up with. We have a very minor entrance off of Sandwich, which we are showing now as service and emergency personnel only. And that would serve the kitchen cafeteria and also allow fire and emergency vehicles to come up and around to the back of the school in order to be within the required 150-foot length of any point from the building for their hoses. Next site plan is approximate, is a very similar, thank you, is a very similar plan at this time, but it is showing an additional separate access point, this time along Orchard Street, where we would be recommending bus entrance only with a gated entrance. And that gated entrance would be controlled with electronics and automatic readers, like a barcode readers on the buses that would open and close the gates. And some access would be given as well to faculty for parking since they arrive before the buses. But in this case, the bus loop would come around and drop off along that same pedestrian spine that I described earlier. And parent vehicles would continue to, to come off of Indian Rock Lane utilizing that, that long driveway again for queuing of parents' cars and to make sure that we're keeping all of that queuing off of the streets. You can see that in both of these options, we're trying to maximize the distance between the existing building, which is dashed in here, and any potential new building. We'll work very closely with the CM to make sure that there's a safe definition between the existing school in session during construction to make sure that there's a separation that is clear and distinct. And, and we feel that the addition of that driveway cut along Orchard would also allow for a safe passage of construction vehicles coming in and out separate from the location of the two existing parking lot entrances for CMS. If there are any questions, we'll be happy to take those. I believe that's the end of the slideshow.
Okay, let's, let's go to the next slide and look at next steps. I want to be sure that the, the board is fully aware of, of next steps. React to the traffic study. As Amy mentioned earlier, the traffic study has now been planned. And the option one and option two driveway plans that you just saw will be heavily influenced and driven by the outcome of the traffic study. So again, we're approximately two weeks away from commencing that study. Developing building plan options and exterior character and building elevations. The, the Design Review Committee has met now three times. Our next meeting is March 22nd. And we continue to meet every two weeks, noting that these two items will be front and center for the Design Review Committee next week for March 22nd. Again, developing building plan options and exterior, exterior character. We will not finish these two items next Wednesday, but we will begin to make a lot of headway with a view to moving to a project plan estimate, which is the last item, construction cost estimate. We are keenly aware that we need to produce a project cost estimate as soon as possible. It looks as though we're roughly 30 days away from being able to do that when we've coordinated with or are coordinating with, with the BET and letting them know of that timeline. At the same time, the, the RTM moderator is keenly aware of, of that timeline. So we're doing everything we can to, to go as quickly as possible. But, but we're also working under the principle that we'd rather be right and late than on time and not right. So that is, that's a very key driving principle for what we're working on right now. So Madam Chairman, we'll entertain any questions and do our best to answer them. You liked that, didn't you?
I loved it. I don't have any questions because I'm there all the time. Ms. Kowalski.
Excellent. With respect to the timeline on, it doesn't include, does this include putting back the fields? Because what would that be? That seems to be a bullet point that would come after the demolition of the existing building and site work completion. Does that mean site work completion, meaning adding the fields, or would that come after?
It would come after.
Okay. And is there any concerns with respect to putting the, the building on the now current fields and putting the fields here? Just because when you take a look at it, the, the lay of the land is obviously not flat already. So is there any concern regarding how we're going to flatten this out for field purposes?
Amy or Kemp, you guys want to try that one? That sounds like more of a landscape architect question.
It, it does, but I think I can give a brief response. We are placing the building into the most dramatic portion of the hillside and allowing for the use of the flat area for fields. Again, once the building comes down, we'll be assessing that area. But we anticipate that there's going to have to be some leveling of the existing field area where we're showing parking lots now and fields. Right now, that existing field gets a little wet. It doesn't drain properly. So we'll be looking to lift that and provide the right drainage underneath anyway. And that will probably allow for the remaining section of the new fields to be raised to about the same level.
Yeah, I'm not sure that addressed the question that I have, but I, I think what you're saying is that assessing and putting in the fields is an after project to the 2026 timeframe and/or September 2026. And it's unclear as to the timing of when the fields would be completed because we'd have to assess the land that those fields would currently go on, which is, this building is sitting.
Sorry, the fields would be designed during the same timeline as the project. We will have the information that we need to design the fields appropriately. And yes, they will be installed immediately after the demolition of the existing building. But luckily, the way that the timeline is working, that will be during the fall season and that is an appropriate time for planting, planting athletic fields.
Unless you're doing turf, then it really doesn't matter when you do it. Anyway, other question. I think, I think this goes more towards you, Tony. We got an email earlier this week. I believe that's when it was sent regarding things that were being proposed to adding into the ed specs and other aspects of the ed specs that the board needed to continue, needed to consider. For one of those was a vestibule, which wasn't included apparently in our original ed specs as to how that would work. But then there were additional ads that SLAM was suggesting to add to the ed specs. How is that going to be addressed in the timeline for the overall approval of the project?
Well, I, I would answer that in a, in a couple of ways. One, we have the view in the building committee that we are strictly to build the building according to the ed specs and the requirements from the Board of Education. And we are currently working under the ed specs from August 22nd of last year. The architectural firm was asked to look at a couple of different variations that was directed by either members of the board or the GPS administration as just additional information. So we do not anticipate deviating from the ed specs. Now, if the board changes the ed specs, we'll, we'll change accordingly, but our mandate is to follow the ed specs.
So in the current drafting and the process, the things they were proposing and adding, we've told them, don't add them.
Correct.
And then with respect to the square footage on the entry in vestibule, when will proposals come to the board as to how to address those issues?
Good. We are beginning a process Monday evening of reviewing what we're, we're calling some ideas from SLAM as to their best thinking based on experiences in, in being the architect for K through 12 schools in the, in the state of Connecticut. Your example is a perfect one. One of the things they recognize is that the current set of ed specs doesn't have a lobby and they're proposing a lobby of 800 square feet. The current ed specs also have bathrooms of 50 and I think maybe 70 square feet that are impossible to build to that size because they're not ADA compliant. So what we hope to do in the building committee is to formally come to the, or propose to the Board of Education as early as late next week, a specific list of things that we would like for you to consider, given the rationale that I just described. And we're going to start that process on Monday. If we don't finish that on Monday, that will spill over into our regular meeting on Tuesday. But we recognize again that time is of the essence, but we do need to give you those, that type of feedback from the architect.
And then I, I just have one last question and I'll give someone else the floor. The, I know that there was some debate going back and forth between square footage and, you know, doing our ed specs and what that meant for square footage purposes. And I know that there was some difference between what CSG had suggested needed to be a ratio from, I guess, the hallway space, right, traveling corridors versus student space except. And SLAM has one opinion and I think CSG obviously gave us a different opinion when we approved the ed specs as to how much space needed to be added. Is there a way to resolve that difference in what, how we view these ed specs to be drawn up, given the ratio between, I guess, classroom space versus traveling space within the school?
You're, you're talking about the, the building efficiency ratio or the building efficiency percentage. SLAM does have a very strong opinion about that. And that's one of the topics that we're going to be looking at as a building committee on Monday as part of this review and, and tapping into the best thinking of SLAM. Is, or is there any way to increase the building efficiency north of 62 to 65%? We don't know the answer to that yet because we haven't gone through the process, but we are going to do that Monday.
Okay. And, and I assume that CSG is a large part in that conversation since they originally suggested that we could get this done for roughly the square footage that they had suggested.
Okay, they, they will be at the table. Yes, Madam Chairman.
So I just want to make the slight correction. The building committee is going to be letting the board know the results of our meetings with and consultations with the architect about some of the areas of resistance we are hitting. I will say as far as the circulation and building core services equation that our ed specs may not have explicitly said, but I will direct everyone's attention to the August 5th memo from Dr. Jones, which does prescribe a range of building core services and combined circulation in the range of 30 to 35%. And it does have our grid with all of those factors laid out. So it was a conscious decision where our head was at that time.
Wait, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Laura, I, I'm not sure I fully follow that is, was the point you just made that there, there isn't actually a discrepancy because we've known all along that, that the, whatever the efficiency rate or something was actually going to be different than what was in the final version of the ed specs?
No, that's not the point I mean.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think I misunderstood.
Karen also has her hand up online. Karen's the only Karen online.
Oh, no, well, I just didn't know if you were calling me. So I had a quick question as I was looking at the presentation and was at the community meeting. And I know there was just, one of the main differences between site plan option one and site plan option two is having a secondary egress, which would be used, I think, for buses. I know currently Central Middle School has two different parking lots with, you know, entrances, separate entrances. And so was there any thought process to how that would, if we remove one of those entrances as in site plan one? Know we're doing a traffic study. I know that there's much longer driveways for a longer queue, but you'll also be having the buses in that same queue, which I think takes up a lot of the spaces for having parents because they'll be mixed in with the buses. So, you know, was there any thought process as to how, you know, why there's a recommendation for one versus two?
Amy, you want to take that one? You seem to be our, our traffic management guru.
Sure. So I just want to be clear that neither of these are a recommendation yet until we have the traffic study and the traffic report to fully analyze all of the intersections. There are sightline issues at, at these roads as well that we want to take into consideration. We do feel like breaking, separating parent traffic and bus traffic is always a great idea at any school. But we'll have to wait to see what the traffic report says as to whether or not that's feasible to come off of Sandwich or Orchard. And that being said, whatever, whatever site plan we end up with, we will be doing a stacking diagram and, and calculating the number of cars and buses that will fit in both of those driveways. There is a longer or a greater need for a longer route for the cars. There are less buses that come and also buses, their time is more controlled because of your scheduling. So the, the idea is to, even if they use the same entrance, to get the buses and cars separated into two separate loops. And that way, the buses will be all in one loop, all fitting in that loop and not in the way of the cars that are stacked.
Perfect. Thank you. Just didn't want any safety issues if, if we have things mixed. But I know that traffic in the area is one of our bigger concerns for our neighbors and we want to be respectful, which is why I was asking, because I know they currently have the, the two different spaces. And so I guess you answered my question. Thank you.
I see Ms. Stowe and Dr. Mercanti Anthony. I'm going to call on Ms. Stowe because I saw her first. While hovering over her, so it helps. First of all, I'm happy, I asked Laura off the, on the side here. I'm happy to hear that they're holding off on the traffic study until the kids are back from private school. That's smart because I can tell you Sandwich is moving a lot more quickly, coming to Central right now. So in fact, I got behind a bus today and still rolled in at 7:58. So, so it's, it's a big change and that's, yeah, it's really, it's not good. So that's number one. But number two, Laura, I'm happy you sort of directed us to this memo because I think it's important to remember that we spent like eight or nine meetings on this over the summer. I just went back through all the board minutes and we put a lot of time into these ed specs. And there was a specific, and actually Mr. Healy wrote this memo with Dr. Jones that I'm looking at here. So I know he spent a lot of time on this and that's also really important to note. And the circulatory percentage, I assume is an industry standard. It's a range. I mean, these are, you know, this isn't the I mean, these are, you know, this isn't the first time people are building a school, so we came up with a range, we applied a percentage, and I'm a little bit disappointed to hear that that's changing because that is seemingly moving the numbers a lot. And I don't think we should be taking away from our academic space in any way. At the same time, we need, of course, have hallways to get the children there. I think that that was very much considered in this, and so I very much look forward to that discussion on Monday night to understand why this architect seems to have different numbers, but to me, I'm a little bit skeptical, I must admit.
We we will be addressing that very thoroughly.
Dr. Mercanti Anthony.
Kind of I'm kind of adding on, I guess, but beating on the point. But yeah, because there was a I mean, as we all saw, there was a particularly unflattering newspaper story last week that basically, you know, called our current Ed specs unachievable thing. We didn't have room for stairs and bathrooms, mechanical closets, didn't make us sound very good at all. And obviously, we spent, we the the newspaper article also, you know, kept referring to the Board of Education Ed specs as if it was the eight of us in a room writing them ourselves. Obviously, we hired professional consultants to 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 draft these and base on numbers.
And we do have bathrooms and stairwells, I assure you.
I'm I I know the so so I am kind of at a loss as to what happened. It sounds like we have, if I'm wrong, it sounds like currently we have one set of professionals who developed the Ed specs that came on and said, you could build this building at a certain square footage, one fifteen. And now we have an architectural firm saying something very different. They and I guess I don't know if that is based on different formulas that they apply or if it's based on now an examination of the site and going in more depth. The it just it it's 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 and have these professionals talk to each other? The was was there an error? The in the the previous in who we hired the Ed spec consultants, the did they make a mistake? What I guess I don't know. It seems like a very big discrepancy. And I don't know if we can get.
What would say a twenty thousand square foot discrepancy? We're working to narrow the spread on Monday. That is the number one concern of ours that we're working to narrow the spread as a unified team architect and building committee so that we can communicate that work to the board when it's complete.
And that's Monday, what time?
Six thirty PM.
Excellent. Okay.
Till nine. Got to stay up late if you want to keep up with this. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I said, yes, it's hybrid, both in person and virtual. Yeah.
Cody and Karen have their hands up as well as Ms. Downey.
I'm probably beating a dead horse here, but.
Oh, he's not done. I'm sorry, Dr. Mercanti is not done.
Oh, sorry.
While while I'm haranguing, the the other, when we, I remember at the board meeting when we hired the architects, I I raised a caution around talking about things outside of the Ed specs and educational gimmicks or things like that, not necessarily things that might not be necessarily rooted in educational research. And I just want to raise that caution again, because like I said, I I I I I get very concerned when when I read about whisper rooms and pods and small group rooms that were not interapproved Ed specs. The I just want to make sure, obviously, as Kathleen said, there was a lot of conversation about the Ed specs and there was a lot of community engagement before we adopted them that went into the Ed specs. So I worry about and I'm concerned when we have additional conversations and get additional ideas that go into the Ed specs after we've already approved them. And that that is that is obviously a a big concern.
Yep. You 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 make a great point. I I would remind you, though, that the Ed specs haven't been changed. We we have very proactively said to SLAM because of their K two K through twelve architectural experience in Connecticut. They've they've been the architect for more K through twelve schools in our state than anyone. We have very proactively pursued with them, give us your best thinking. Wire at it. If you have any suggestions, let us know what they are. And if the building committee agrees with the suggestion, then we'll make a formal recommendation to the Board of Education. So that's what's that's what's coming. Yep. Point well taken, though. Absolutely.
So I will call Cody and then Karen.
Yeah, just my question was that that square footage difference was so big that is this a matter of like someone making him or maybe we don't have an answer to this, but is this a matter of someone making a mistake? Or some like you know, reasonable people can disagree or something? And if so, like, how is that? I'm just, maybe this isn't the right place to drill into this yet, but like, I think it's relevant for us when we think about who we rely, like when we hire an Ed spec firm or an architecture firm in the future, like if it is a mistake, that's something we should be aware of. And I guess what does it take to figure out if why the square footage is so off?
I do think there are some competing ideologies around this particular issue of a net to gross square foot calculation. I think that's where we have traced this differential.
Yeah, I I also think it's noteworthy to to say that when we questioned SLAM about their proposed percentage of building of the building efficiency ratio, they showed us documentation of six additional middle schools where the building efficiency ratio was between sixty two and sixty five percent with an average of sixty four percent. And I mean, the documentation is the documentation. When we've asked other professionals, can you give us one example of of any school between seventy and seventy five percent? We've we've gotten no answer, no reply back from that. So I think it's a great question from Cody as to is it a mistake or whatever? We really don't know the answer to that. Except one, I share with you the information that I just shared. But secondly, we're going to do a very deep dive on on this very topic on Monday. And SLAM is going to be prepared to show how the how the percentage is calculated, the drivers of the percentage, so that everyone can come away with with a leveling, if you will, of understanding what is the right building efficiency percentage for this school.
What what is CSG say when we say what's the, I I know Laura said there's some competing theories, but like, is what's the counter or do they, can they point to an example where a school had that ratio? Or is there there anything to substantiate why they gave us the numbers they did?
No.
Is does that call into question having them hired as our owner's rep? Like, I would, that would make me think that.
Kathleen has the has the calculation in front of her.
Yeah, I mean, this is in the memo and the prior version thirty three percent was used in the six sixty model, thirty five percent was used in what was called the six sixty hybrid. That accounts for the discrepancy in terms of the ratio that circulation space between the two models in the last version. This was when we were going between the six sixty flex and the six sixty revised. The thirty five percent was chosen to address the potential need for more room in common areas with an increase in student population to around seven hundred. Remember, we went down from there. However, it was determined that thirty three percent is sufficient to meet the needs of the population in both updated options. So we went through all this analysis, guys. We spent a lot of time out. I know we were tired through the summer, but I am going to send this information to the building committee and SLAM. This was a memo that Tom and Tony wrote, but this was based on all the information of CSG at the time. This to me, I'm just going to say it to me, you know, sometimes people come in and they all of a sudden there's budget creep. Sometimes we all like to have things a little bit go up. We have different opinions. I was using the, you know, the example the other day that an investment bank tells you one price, the other investment bank tells you the other price, and you know, you go with the one that brings you to market it a little bit higher. So I think it's a little bit of that. I'm just going to say it, but and I am going to forward you this memo in case you don't have it.
Do. I I would assure you it is not that, which is why we're going to to have SLAM defend their number Monday night. Eyes wide open.
Tony. Extremely confused.
Oh, Karen has been waiting a long time. Karen Hirsch online.
Oh, thank you. I I was just going to go back to the fact that, you know, we did, like, you know, Ms. Stowe said, have a very long discussion on multiple occasions, and there was one particular discussion that we had prior to voting and there were I distinctly remember CSG discussing with us, there were multiple ways to look at circulation. And we had a discussion about that. I can go back and look at the specific dates. So it may just be that there's a difference in looking looking at that formula, and I would definitely like to hear more information as to how SLAM calculated their circulation space and and other things. But I would leave that to the building committee at this point, and that's why I was just going to say, I know that a lot of things were suggested. I appreciate from Mr. Turner suggesting that they've asked SLAM for to give some some good ideas and suggestions, unless much like Dr. Mercanti Anthony. You know, we didn't ask for whisper rooms. We didn't ask for additional things. So let's look at those, I think, at this point as a suggestion, and I will wait to hear from the building committee who's been working their tails off on having these discussions and presentations. You know, nothing's been brought or to us, but I know these weren't things we asked for, and it's not really within the architect's program to to change our Ed specs without without bringing it back to us. So I I'm I'm hoping that they will be working within the confines that we gave them. And I look forward to your meeting, hearing the results of your meeting and discussion on Monday.
Ms. Downey and then Ms. Coles.
Okay, I'm actually going to change gears back to what we were talking about, about the traffic and the cars. And just go back to where we were. Anyway, I guess Amy is probably the right person, just kind of curious about, I wasn't able to participate, just the the neighborhood response to these different concepts, which I assume were shared with them, and how a decision gets made once you have your traffic report. Just to give us some sense, because I think we have a lot of views that we were talking about. It's good to get the cars off, the advantage of a bus entrance. How do you make that decision and how was the neighbor response to that?
So we were really happy to have about sixty eight questions sent in via a QR code that we shared that evening, and we have compiled the responses to all of those. A number of them were about the entrances and exits. And we've had separate conversations with some of the neighborhood groups who were also invited to our visioning session. Each of the neighborhood groups has a different interest, of course, you can imagine, depending upon what road their neighborhood is connected to. But again, we're going to use hard data to make those decisions, and we'll use the traffic study to do that after all of the traffic counts are in from all of the intersections as well as the sightlines that will really also be taken into consideration with your staff in town in DPW and planning and zoning and the arborist. Because sometimes when you put in a new driveway, you need to take down some trees in order to provide the right sightlines. And we know that we want to be very sensitive to keeping privacy for the neighborhoods and keep as much of the existed wooded edge of the property as possible.
Also, I would add, Ms. Downey, and that is, we will be having our our second community engagement forum in late April or early May to get further neighborhood and community comment about the very thing, right? They've been very engaged. As Christina said, they not only did they come to the visioning meeting, which was now right after SLAM was hired in January, but they've been very proactive in their communications with us through our Gmail and also by attending the community engagement forum last week. So more of that's coming to keep them involved.
The actual chair has told me that the pretend chair is almost out of time. So, Dr. Mercanti Anthony, you have one minute.
I have a I have a different point. They so I know in the documents, one of the things that is a possibility is the reduction in space of the proposed new auditorium. And I know no decisions have made yet. The obviously, this that is a this room is a major community space, and it's used a lot by a number of things, including obviously the RTM. I I would suggest that it would be incredibly helpful to hear from the RTM. When we're talking, when we're having these phases, the design phases, if that's something that if that's appropriate or not, the in that if they don't speak up, I think there's a real possibility that space gets shrunk. The if we're looking at spaces spaces and things like that, and I think it would be incredibly helpful while we're having these conversations now, not when it comes time for the find their final approval, to hear from the membership of the RTM of whether or not they believe a large auditorium space as proposed in the current Ed specs is valid and appropriate. The because otherwise, it's very real possibility that they're moving and they they need to know that.
Listen, if you weren't if you weren't paying attention because you have a job on consolidation day, Ms. Tarkington said there better be adequate parking here so that she doesn't have to park at the church for the RTM meetings, so.
I I will give you a more.
The BET seems to be invested here.
I I'll give you a more formal answer. You you make a great point. The the RTM does have a representative on the building committee. And also on the building committee are both current and former members of the RTM. So we we are thinking that that voice is there. And we'll hear those voices on Monday when we look at the look at the list, but you make a great point.
Do you want to give Cody another chance, Joe? Okay, Cody, you may go ahead.
Hey, thanks. Sorry, I know this, I I just want to come back to the point I was making before because I'm not sure I got a fully. Like, I I understand what our approach is. It it just strikes me as really bizarre that something that's basically a math question, like the square footage thing could be so far off. It's it's in and then it sounds like we've got a view from the committee that the architecture is definitely right. We have views on the board that maybe they're wrong. I is there like, how are we going to reconcile this and figure out if we were misled on what the numbers are? It's obviously easier to correct if the architect has an error, but if we, the Ed specs were an error, like in terms of the square footage calculation, are we, do we have a definitive way to figure that out? Like, to establish if a if we were given incorrect information? And if it is established that we were given incorrect information, do we plan to keep the firm that gave us that information employed on this project?
Well, you ask a lot of a lot of great questions. May maybe I can give you one blue sky answer, and that is, i- if you would be patient with us and let us do our work Monday and Tuesday. As I said earlier, we're going to ask SLAM to defend their calculations down to two two digits to the right of the decimal point on building efficiency. I think if you could let us do that work and then make our report to you on our findings, the answers to your other questions will most likely be be obvious. And then, of course, it's a board decision as to where you where you go from there with that information. Maybe you'll have a recommendation back back to us, but if we if we could do our work and come back to you with our report next week, I I think that will shed much more light on the topic.
Okay, I understand that, but is there, will you guys give CSG or a chance to, I guess, be in the room and offer their case, or is that is that the right way to do that?
Well, CSG will, CSG and and Turner and SLAM will all be at the table in this meeting, so absolutely.
Okay, cool. We'll be sitting tight then.
Could I have my superpowers back, please?
Happily.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I noticed the Monsignor out there yawning a little bit. So and tomorrow is the high holy day for some of your flock, so I know you might have to get going. So I make a motion that we move item ten D and E ahead to be next in line so we can address some of our audience participation here. I do I have a second for that?
I second.
Can we all all in favor? Please say aye, raise your hand online.
All right.
I and Karen.
No, we have administration that has to get to work tomorrow, too, that are waiting to present for action, so.
So you say no. Thank you. Okay, so you lose. All right. We then move ahead, so let's go with item ten D. We then move ahead. So let's go with item ten D. The Hamilton Avenue Field Use Require, Request. Motion is approved. That's not the one. Let's see. His motion will be to authorize the Chair of the Board of Education to execute the draft partnership agreement regarding the field use permit and the use of the parking garage at Hamilton Avenue School. Do I have a second? Michael, do the second. Okay. Discussion.
Shouldn't we let Blaze make the presentation? Because this is his item now.
Uh, what he is going to be, yes, of course.
Yeah.
Blaze, you there?
Oh, yes. I am here. Can, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, yeah. So before you is a motion. This is a request to, that, that Greenwich Public Schools received to use the Hamilton Avenue School Field from the St. Rocks Church. They submitted a formal request to use Hamilton Avenue School Field in the parking deck for their annual St. Rocks Feast. The dates that they are looking to use the field are twenty twenty-three through August ninth through August twelfth. And they would like to have some access to the field beginning August fifth. So there's a draft motion. Their letter is included in their formal request to use the field. And before you is also a draft agreement for the board to kind of formalize what their, what their decision may be on the field use permit. I believe we have the representatives of the church feast there to make their presentation. So I would, this, this really is not, I was an issue of mine. This is a community issue being brought to the board. I'm facilitating that conversation right now because as part of the event permit process, as you know, the event for our property is typically handled by Parks and Recreation. This event will still be intended to be permitted by Parks and Recreation, but specifically the use of the field which Parks and Recreation is not permitting is why this is before the board today. So I believe that Mr. Capielli is there today as well as Father McIntosh who made the request and I would like to hand it over to them. Does that sound good to you? Looks like it's good.
That's great. Paul, go ahead.
Chairman, thank you. Board, thank you. I think Father's request was, was pretty well detailed. If everyone had an opportunity to read it, we had addressed some things that we thought were important to, you know, make this safer and better for the community. And I'm hoping that everyone agrees and allows us to use the, the property.
Okay, any questions?
Christina? I have, I have a number of questions slash comments. This is, this is more going to be partially to Blaze, partially, you know, procedurally, and you know, you know, I love procedure matters. First of all, one of the things is the Greenwich Public Schools will issue a permit for the use of the field. I don't think we have that authority because those are under Parks and Rec. Am I right or am I wrong? I don't, so that's kind of a question.
Would be wrong on that. I believe that last year we issued a permit. We issued permits for the parking decks. And we.
I know for the parking deck, but I thought we had a whole discussion about the fields when we were talking about at the budget committee the other day. Like we don't permit the fields.
We do not typically permit anything on town property or school property. That is correct.
No, but I mean.
Usually handled by Parks and Recreation.
Right. So I don't think we can undertake that we're issuing a permit for the use of the fields if we don't, I don't know if we, and these are just questions. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe.
That we have that authority.
Permit may not be the right word too. That could be, that's a good point.
So this is another, this is again, these are procedural things. Whether the proper signatory is the Chair of the Board or the Superintendent, again, that's a question. I don't have the answer to it. One thing is, and colleagues may chime in once they hear my questions. It talks about the community will donate. It says another twelve months landscaping service agreement. I don't really remember the first one that was an annual one. So I'm not sure we were made aware of that previously. And then the issue of, while, while I applaud the desire to give fifteen thousand to the Hamilton Avenue PTA, I think we have to take a look at our gift policy about what is appropriate because then it becomes a gift that we have to accept, which then has to go to the RTM. It's, it's, it's just a little more complicated because it's not a gift from one of our partner organizations. Again, procedurally, I'm, I'm just, you know, Mrs. Kowal, Ms. Kowalski, it's like tag, you're it on the gift policy. And we'd had the conversations about donations generally the other day. And then the other thing would be, I know the letter commits to using a certain vendor. That's not memorialized in the agreement. So while I'm not necessarily against the concept, I think we only got these documents yesterday and there's a lot of que, I have a lot of questions that I think need to be satisfied, which I'm not sure we can do this evening, Mr. Kelly. So that's just a a reaction.
Thank you. Karen Hirsch has her hand up.
Thanks, Joe. And much like Ms. Downey, I, my concerns are mostly from a, you know, another, I can't even speak. I'm so sorry. From a process point of view, this is the first time we've seen this. We got these documents barely twenty-four hours ago. I know I have a lot of questions. Like we typically have a first read of things like this and have an opportunity to have input from the public on their opinion, you know, the community that this serves. And so I, I think that, that putting this as an action item tonight may not be the right option, mostly because I think I, you know, a bunch of us may have some specific questions. Much like Ms. Downey, I did want to point out a few things that I was concerned about. One of them was the mention specifically of a donation to the PTA. And I think that it's all wonderful and well to donate to the PTA and I applaud St. Rocks for doing so. I think it'll be very appreciated by the PTA, but they are not part of the Greenwich Public Schools. It should not be part of our agreement. The PTAs have their own process for accepting donations. They're a separate entity. They have their own rules and requirements. I'm not sure how this would affect their gift cap, though I'm sure probably won't put them over the limit, but I really think that that's not something that should be part of our agreement. I think it's an exceptionally generous offer from St. Rocks, being that it'll go back to the kids. But I, I don't think that that's something that is part of our decision-making. And much like Ms. Downey, I see that it notes offering another twelve months of landscaping services. I don't remember seeing that come before us as a gift prior to this. So I think that that would be an additional gift request that we would need to consider. And I'd like to be able to sort of see what that, that entails. As I think we would need to approve a donation of those services, much like we may, will have, we'll have to approve the next, next agenda item at some point. So I think that's my bigger concern for everything else. My last question is for actually Dr. Jones. I know we're looking to fix the Hamilton Avenue parking structure. And I'm not entirely sure how long that would take or when we think we might, or when we, what timeframe we're looking into that. I know that St. Rocks has consistently utilized that parking structure over the years as, as part of this, you know, the surface of, and I don't want to hold them up if that's part of this.
Blaze, I think you answered that better today than I did, actually, on the timing. You're just asking.
Yeah. So the timeframe, Dan was working on a assessment for an RFP, should be done within the next two weeks. And the goal was to have the preliminary report hopefully by June.
Okay. Thank you. Kathleen?
Hey, Joe. So I have a few questions too, but I have to tell you, and the fact that tomorrow St. Patrick's Day, I'm marching in the parade in New York City tomorrow morning. So I'm on a very early train. And with the Knights. So I do have to say, I obviously care very much about this. However, I too feel like I'm just kind of getting up to speed and I have a few other questions, like is this coming every year? Are we memorializing this as a partnership or a policy? Are they becoming a partner? And therefore that becomes something around gifting? Like there's lots of bigger picture things that we should be thinking about. And it's the first time we're seeing this. So in the interest of moving forward on the agenda, I kind of think we should maybe defer this to our next meeting, especially because thankfully for once, we're not like trying to do this in the summer. We have, you know, a few months here before they have to rent the fields. So.
I will make a comment first and then we'll see if that's what everybody wants to do. My first comment is that my colleagues are not wrong. But I do have to apologize profusely that we are resisting, not, it's not my colleagues that are doing it. It's the procedures we have in place. When I joined the board, I put it as a high priority for me to make it easy for people to give money to our schools to make sure that money goes to the children and betters our schools. So I apologize. If you go to a private school and you're offered to donate money to them, they take you to dinner and buy you wine. All right. And they sit you down and pat you on the back and say, thank you. We put paperwork in front of you and scrutinize you and question you as you stand up here before us, trying to give us stuff to help the kids. So I apologize for that. The procedure has to be addressed. I was, I feel I didn't do that as I wanted to do that on three years ago when I joined the board. None of my colleagues are wrong. They are a hundred percent correct, correct in analyzing the procedure and needing to hear more information. So I'm not saying they're wrong, but I'm saying I, I think we have to address the system. And I think we have to say thank you and I apologize for the system being difficult the way it is. Karen?
So I agree that the, the system is difficult. And so I'm going to say, I think you should, as your almighty powers as board chair, ask one of us and I'll volunteer to help with the process. So that, because I think this is one, a very gracious offer that should not be denied, that would give the Hamilton Avenue School a wonderful upgrade and a wonderful field for kids to play on and for other uses. And I know that the festival is a huge hit in the community was last year and everybody was raving about all of the different carnival foods. Unfortunately, I missed it, so I'm going to try to get it this year. So in order to get this done and get this done right, because I think overall the sentiment of the board as it was last year is to let this go forward, but we got to take care of the protocols. I'm happy to work with Father and Mr. Capielli in order to get this done so that when we can bring it to the board, we can do that and do some background issues as well.
Cody? Joe, Joe. It's Blaze. I just wanted to just before Cody, just for clarity, the donation that the church made is give it, the checks were written out to the Hamilton Avenue PTA and they are donated by them to the community. So just as a point of note, it's noted on that draft agreement as a point of note, but it doesn't need to be on that. I mean, that document is just a draft for the board to do whatever they want with. So I think it's a good conversation, but Paul, you can point out something otherwise, but the, the church dropped off the fifteen thousand dollar checks for the Hamilton Avenue PTA. And those are being, you know, given to the community regardless, you know, directly to the PTA.
That covers that procedure. So good.
So I just want to cover that piece right there for you.
Great. Thank you. Cody, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think this one is a, an easy one. This event was a big success last year. It sounds like they're making improvements to it, even if they didn't, I'd be in favor of it, but I don't think, I think it's like so stereotypical of government agencies to say, oh, let's spend more time talking about it. Let's make sure the process is correct. But we know that this is, or I think some of us know that this was a successful event. I would not be in favor of delaying a vote on it. If it doesn't pass in a vote, we should definitely bring it up again later. But I think Blaze has done a great job getting this set up and obviously is intimately familiar with Parks and Rec and that's helpful. But, you know, I feel like we already went through this once. This is getting ahead of it, which is nice. And I'd be very in favor of voting on this and having one less thing on our agenda to worry about in future meetings because Lord knows just with Central, we've got a lot to talk about. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Cody. Karen? Hirsch?
Oh, I was just going to say, this, this is not a discussion or, you know, in my tense and opinion at this moment, just as to the, the use of the field. It is just really a question on process. And so it's not about saying yes or no. And they do have time. I think that, you know, last year we were under a great deal of pressure. Due to time, they were, we greatly appreciate that this has come to us so early. But I, you know, I know there probably not just myself, but have some other questions. Other members might have other questions on, on this. You know, that just we want to be able to make sure that we're dotting our, as in crossing our Ts before we move forward because there are some, a couple of questions, but and I will say thank you in advance on half of Hamilton Avenue PTA for already supporting their students there and that. I think that's great. So.
Thank you, Karen. And I'll conclude this with a, sorry, I didn't see it, Michael. Sorry.
Um, the, the only silver lining I, I see in a month delay is this idea that if we can figure out a way of memorializing this annual event in such a way that we do not have to have a annual approval of it. The, but something that, some kind of longer term agreement. I think that would that, that I see as being helpful. But I do have a question. Would a, because everybody says we've got plenty of time, blah, blah, but do you see, Paul, do you see a month delay hurting you with the vendor negotiations? Is it, Monsignor references here?
I'm afraid of ever using the vendor that we've been forced to use for the last eight or nine years.
Right.
Unfortunately, we had such a small space that the more reputable, reputable vendors wouldn't consider us. So we do have consideration from a, a very reputable vendor. And unfortunately, like a lot of other things, COVID shut down a lot of these carnival companies. So there's very few choices. I, I, I want to give you folks whatever you need to make the proper decisions. I'm good at that selling them. I hopefully can hang on to them. It's a consideration of mine. It is something that, that that, that could be at risk i- in a minimal way, but that minimal way is super impactful. I don't know if that answers it correctly, but that's, that's the truth.
Laura?
So because this is such an extenuating circumstance where this keeps coming back to us. Is, and I'll ask the question because I think I know the answer. Did Parks and Rec say no already? And that's because the board is like the decider of last resort. So the implication is, does Parks and Rec say no to allowing the field use?
So I can answer that. The, last year, what I learned from you folks in the meetings, you guys actually laid out how the, the approval of a field gets used. And I think permit, there was a question earlier. It was a good question. And the word permit may not be the right word. The Board of Ed has a scheduling thing on their computer. And it schedules the properties. So I think what we're doing here is looking to schedule the property, not permit. Parks and Rec would still have to permit it as it relates to the insurance and all the things that go along with it. But Parks and Rec ultimately doesn't get to decide who does and who does not use the, the school property. That's what was communicated from this board to me last year. I, and on top of that, it was, you guys had discussed and I was listening, so I wasn't part of it. But what I heard was the principal had the first write a refusal at some, because someone had asked, they were concerned why this came to the board and they were.
Yeah, we don't need to.
Yeah, they were talking about the procedure.
Decide this stuff.
It was supposed to be that the, the principal would decide. And if the principal either didn't want to decide or turned it down, then the, then the entity would have the right to go to the superintendent. If the superintendent either turned it down or wanted to throw it to the board, then that's what hap, that's what would happen. I think out of an abundance of respect is why it's at the board. I, I think that's the best answer. I don't think we want to skip anyone. I think we want this input here, which is a, a very final resolution. I think that's why Blaze set it up that way. I, I just followed the instructions as to what process I should follow and I followed it.
I, this is directly contradictory to what we learned last year. We were told we were the deciders of last resort because there was a discrepancy between Parks and Rec allowing use of the fields because Parks and Rec decides who and when uses them. We, we never, like no baseball league. who and when uses them. We we never, like, no baseball league has ever asked us about, you know, when they could use our fields, no soccer, no football. You know, this is something that um Parks and Rec does exclusively because they have management over our outdoor facilities. So I love that you're checking with us. But it's, I don't believe this is really our job unless there's a unless there's already been a no.
Uh, I can, I'll I'll just help answer that question, um, because I thought the same thing, um, also having worked over there. But for the field, um, the permit for this use will not be issued by Parks and Recreation.
So they said no.
Yes, coordinated to find out what the process would be for the event permit process from Parks and Recreation. They will permit the event as normal as all events, walk it through the process with insurance, risk management, police, fire, everything like normal. But they are looking for the Board of Education to permit uh by permit, I'm using the actual definition to allow use of the field. And we already do parking deck, so that's part of a normal process. We do parking, you know, lots, but they are looking for uh the Board of Education to allow use of the field. They are not permitting use of the field.
Thank you. Cody.
Then you're in the right.
Oh, sorry. All right, Cody, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna make the point that this is a great opportunity for us is un- unpaid citizen volunteers to do the right thing, whereas other people, if you're, you know, an employee who has to sign off on this, it's maybe a lot of downside potential that you may perceive with little upside. Um, so I don't fault anyone for not like, there's different incentives and constraints for different people, and I'm not faulting any of the folks in the various departments for not wanting to just have this on their plate. But for us, we're in a nice position where we can say this makes sense. This has a good track record of being successful. Let's sign off on it and move on and stop talking about process and a bunch of things that really don't matter for what we know will be a successful event.
Now, Hersch.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, make make the suggestion that we uh table the motion for the next meeting and like we've done in the past, if we have a a document where you can post, you know, specific questions, so that same question's not asked over and over. That way we won't have to uh spend as much time uh going through a lot of the nitty gritty, the next at our next meeting, and we can be able to try to move forward in a more positive manner uh with this. And and just to address one comment, you know, we we do have policies and procedures, and we have them for a reason. So uh, you know, that that's why those of us who are focused on some of that, you know, do do point that out. So it's it's not just about uh making it difficult. It's they're there for a reason. Whether you like it, you know, or not, but so.
Cody.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is a, this is already a disproportionate amount of time that's spent not on student achievement or capital planning or things that actually matter for students. I would or strategic plan. Thanks, Mike. Um, I would recommend, uh, can you, I don't, I always forget the rules. Can I make a motion to to vote on this?
There's a motion on the floor. You can call the question, but before you do that, I'd like to say something.
Okay.
I I'm I I'm under the impression that this motion won't pass. I believe we have a strategy that we could put forward that will get this motion to pass. It'll bring all members of the board on board with this. We have to address a little bit of procedure. Karen Kowalski has agreed to work as a Dr. Jones pointed out with staff uh to solve or tie up the loose ends. I believe we can get a commitment by all eight board members if we just tie up some of the loose ends. So we might have to delay this, so I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Joe, can you help me with, does that mean I should make a motion?
You can make a motion if you like. Yes.
Can I make the same motion you just made?
You can, yes. You have to say it. Let's see.
What's the text that I have to say?
Let's see.
A motion to approve the field use request?
The last motion I made was authorize the Chair of the BOE to execute the draft partnership agreement regarding.
All right. I I motioned to authorize the Chair of the BOE to execute the draft partnership agreement regarding the field use permit and use of the parking garage in Hamilton School.
Before somebody seconds that motion, I'd like to ask a question. Can I do that? Okay, second it. Now can I ask a question?
Now you could speak, speak to the, speak to the motion.
If if the motion does not pass, um, will there be an opportunity to bring this before the board again?
We could always bring up a motion fails, could be brought to the board again for a vote.
Well, if we, and if we table it, it's can simply go on to the next, we can ask at agenda planning to put it back on for the next meeting.
Correct. So either way, it it fail or uh if we uh withdraw the motion again, then we could, it still could be brought on next meeting.
And the motion, sorry, Cody, I wasn't listening to you. Um.
I just read the text from the vendor, the action.
It authorizes execution of the agreement in the current form.
So Cody, while I completely agree with you, and I would go ahead and vote yes. I don't think you're going to get it to pass tonight. And the question is, do we want to go through that process or let take the next month, let me work with the staff to get it in a point where we might get convinced some of our colleagues.
We hold on, we might, we might want to ask for some divine intervention here. What do you think? No, sorry, just kidding. Mike, go ahead.
I think um we're discussing the motion. I think in we're considering the community conversation, I think it's a very different community conversation to uh convince the board to overturn a a a vote uh taken the month before that it is to reconsiderate new vote for the first time um at the April meeting, if you understand what I mean, Cody.
I understand exactly what you mean, and I agree that we should table it.
Somebody said divine intervention. Perfect. Cody, are you interested in withdrawing your motion?
Yeah, sure. I'll just state that I'm really disappointed because this is a colossal waste of time relative to the other things this board should be working on.
I don't think anyone disagrees with you.
Well, if people did disagree or sorry, if people did uh if people actually agreed with me on that, we would just vote and get this through because we know where this is going to end up anyways. It's just a waste of time. But we'll, you know, do whatever we need to do to distract from the real issues.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Send questions. Okay. Send any questions to this topic to Tony. She'll answer them for you. And Christina, you've got a motion.
Because Joe asked me to, is it a motion to accept the donation of an irrigation system as proposed in the donation form dated one thirteen twenty twenty-three, conditional upon a fully executed GPS purchasing contract insurance as required by the town risk manager, a fully executed fifteen-year full-service maintenance agreement and all relevant town permits.
I second it.
Um, similar to the last one, Joe, because if I may, because you kind of told me I could. I you know, I just, my question, you know, I just have some questions about this. Again, we only got this last night and didn't, you know, in terms of I I see there's a maintenance agreement involved, but we really haven't addressed things like increased water usage or electricity costs for the district to be paying in connection with the sprinkler system. So I I just think a little more clarity would be for me would be helpful if we could get that provided to us again, because we didn't get these documents till last night, and we don't have answers to some of these questions unless Blaze has answers up in the Zoom sphere.
I I believe that I'm not sure if the donor is there um or there's a representative there, but they were uh planning on coming to speak. So, Joe, I may defer to you to see if the Mr. Frank Cortese or his representative is in the room or if they left given the hour.
Frank's not here.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll put it off as the other one. Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Happily.
Thank you. Okay. Send questions to a Dr. Jones, please. Uh, now we are, uh, let's see, where are we now? Uh, we are the
The soil update.
New courses. That's it. New courses. Linear algebra. Where's our motion for linear algebra? Approve, I move to approve addition of linear algebra as GHS, GHS as presented at the Jan nineteen two thousand twenty-three BOE meeting. Do I have a second?
I'd happily second that.
Okay, Karen, second. Okay, discussion.
Is anyone presenting or should we just start asking questions? Okay, Andrew Byrne is online as well. It looks like Karen has a question, so I'm preparing mine. Go ahead. Just took your paras back. Joe, go ahead.
We're we're asking questions of Ann and uh and Mr. Byrne, right? Okay, so questions? Go ahead, Karen, you'll be handed by us.
Yeah, I did. To be fair, I I don't technically have a question. I was just going to make a statement. Um, and I think it's important that people just know, you know, I, the reason I'm fully supporting this course, it's the mission of the Greenwich Public Schools to educate all of our students to the highest levels of academic achievement and enable them to reach and expand their potential. And I believe offering this course gives our students that opportunity, um, you know, to to expand and grow. Um, and I think it's just important to know, because I I did uh ask some questions of of uh Mr. Byrne as well as uh Mr. Mayo, because uh I just wanted to know. But you know, there's really no downside to offering the course, because if we add it to our course catalog, it doesn't mean necessarily the course will run, because Greenwich High School does require a minimum number of students to enroll in a course for it to run. So um we offer plenty of courses that due to low enrollment are not always run every single year. Um, and while we may not have enough students to run it in one particular year, another year or year following, we might very well do have that uh enough students to do that. And it gives them an opportunity to take a course like this from our excellent uh and incredible teachers as opposed to taking something online, which doesn't show up on their transcripts in the same way, especially when they're students at that, you know, level are are looking to make sure it's it's on their transcript when they're applying to colleges and things like that. So to me, I think this is sort of a a no-brainer. Uh, it's been asked for for many years, not necessarily linear algebra, but higher level math courses. I just don't see a downside to it.
Thank you, Karen. Kathleen.
Um, so Andrew, thanks so much. Um, I'm happy you brought this to us, but I do have a few questions. Um, so Karen makes a good point. We typically don't run courses, right? When there's a certain, not a certain number of students. You in this um guide suggests that we'd be buying at least something for twelve students. So is that in fact your minimum? And can you tell me sort of what the matriculation potential is looking like? I mean, I think that there's, you know, in the tenth grade, I I feel like there's six, but I could be totally wrong about that. So could you tell me what the eleventh grade is looking like and the tenth grade and maybe what the next few years look like in terms of potential?
Sure. Um, thank you, Ms. Stowe. Um, obviously, uh, I I think the opportunity to offer linear algebra is an exciting one, and I we heard earlier tonight from the students and um, it's important to know that the department and the entire Greenwich High School faculty is behind it. So while we only have eight students who would be eligible for potentially enrolling for next year, we do suspect that more students are in the pipeline. Um, especially when we look back to some of our current eighth and ninth graders who have been accelerating or completing honors algebra two, um, even in the eighth grade. So um, while I don't, I'm not um, expecting that we'll be able to get it up and running right away, but um, as Ms. Hersch had mentioned, it is something that we're striving towards, and I think uh we will be in a better position in future years. Regarding class size, I I I would defer to uh Principal Mayo and Vice Principal Talata on uh what those thresholds are. I know that um they try to maximize uh student opportunities across all our course catalog uh using the um teachers that we have on staff.
Can I ask again?
Good.
Yeah. Um, so I know that a few years ago, for example, I remember we approved, um, was it honors advanced topics in computer science? It was the one class beyond AP computer science. So of similar, I guess stature, I want to say. Has that had an opportunity to run just as a comparison?
Unfortunately, we have not been able to realize that course at at this point in time. We've uh, we certainly have heard, as you guys have heard in in the fall, our computer science program is blossoming and, you know, we're we're really proud of the work that we're doing, especially in the two AP courses. Um, but we just haven't been able to kind of get even more than nine or ten kids in the last several years to uh pursue that.
And so then what do they do? They're they kind of take the independent, is it also MIT freeware? Is it the same concept that they then have to go that way? And how does that, to Karen Hersch's point, how does that work on the transcript? Do colleges sort of appreciate that, recognize that, you know, I'm trying to say, I don't, that's one of the things I've been hearing about this. The children taking honors in our algebra online is that it's almost like it's not well explained to the colleges.
Yeah, I don't I don't want to speak to the college impact, but I will say that, you know, the the fact that our faculty are so generous across the board, especially math and science, to provide these independent studies for our students is really a a a unique quality of Greenwich High School and one that um, you know, our students are very fortunate to have. And I will say, you know, um, in my interactions with colleges and and students, you know, certainly um, they applaud the students and their passion uh for wanting to, you know, pursue these uh various topics at such a high level. And and again, um, you know, our teachers are there supporting them and and encouraging them a long way.
Thank you. I could keep going, but it's not fair. So I'm gonna, no, go ahead. Other people, thank you very much.
Cody, jump in, jump in. He's got his hand up there. Go ahead, Cody. Math topic for you.
Yeah, I think this class is great. I just want, I think I made this point last time, and it doesn't look like it's a hard requirement, but I would very much encourage you to offer this to good math students who don't want to take calculus, because you don't need nothing on the um unit schedule requires calculus. And I think it's really nice to have a alternative math path for like, not everybody who likes math likes calculus, me included. Uh, but um just, I think that's a way to fill out the class, because it like treating it as an alternative as opposed to, you know, just another step, because it is totally uh a different type of math.
Okay, Cody, your point is well made, and I certainly agree with you. Um, I think one of the hesitations on our part is that we don't want to unintentionally decimate our our wonderful Ad Calc program that we've, you know, been very successful with over the last number of years. So I do think, you know, moving forward, maybe that might be something that we would consider um as a school and as a department um to open up the access to a course like linear algebra.
Is it going to be a requirement to have calculus, or is that just intended?
A- as of right now, our current um description in the Course of Study Guide is that they would have uh completed advanced calculus. We're trying to fill that knit that need inside our community for those students that exhaust all our our courses. So um, but like I said, we we may want to come back to you again as we you know, do further studies in the future and have more conversations with our students.
Does the, does the BOE have to vote on it if you change the course requirements? Or once the course is approved, you can kind of do what you want?
Well, every year, the uh Course of Study Guide is brought uh ahead and and any uh changes are are um communicated by um Dr. and Caraballo. And um, you know, if something was significant, I I would imagine that the board would um want to weigh in on that discussion.
Would that be, would that hit the qualification for significant or just like from a practical standpoint?
I don't think so um personally, but I I I wouldn't want to speak for Dr. Carabelle. I see that she's on the phone on the uh line here, but I I think this is something that um, you know, as we explore and hear from our students, you know, it could be an easy switch. And, you know, not that I, um, as I said, I I I know from a math progression point of view that linear algebra doesn't necessarily have to follow Ad Calc, but um, you know, I I want to make sure that we're not just accidentally you know, pushing our students into the wrong direction either. So I think a little bit more time and investigation would probably be helpful with this one.
Yeah, I would just say like, there's not a, the point is to expand choice, give people more options. It's not like why we would be have more loyalty to advanced calculus over linear algebra. That doesn't make sense to me. It would be, it would just as, just as well as it would make sense if you came and said you had to take linear algebra in order to take advanced calculus. So I would strongly encourage you, I'm not going to get in the way of this program, but I would strongly encourage you to not make that a requirement, because it just but you might as well make, you know, taking some kind of literature class requirement. It just doesn't have overlap. Uh, understood. I I appreciate that. Thank you, Cody.
Thanks, Cody. Mike, you had something?
Yeah, I mean, I um, I know I voiced concerns um last month, and um, I think some of the concerns were misconstrued is that I'm not necessarily um against um the high school offering linear algebra. I think it's a perfectly fine and appropriate thing to do. I think though as I said, what gives me pause is that, and I think what should uh we need to continue to consider is um the pressure that whenever we expand our course offerings, that that add that that puts on all of our students and our whole student body. The um last month, I I think I mentioned Race to Nowhere. I got the title of the book wrong. The title of the book is called Beyond Measure. The um Race to Nowhere was the documentary based on the book. The uh, but the book's well worth reading. The uh, when it came out, there was a lot of conversation. Chris Winters was headmaster at the time. The, uh, but the book's well worth reading. The, uh, when it came out, there was a lot of conversation. Chris Winters was headmaster at the time, and he. I remember him having, uh, I remember him reading, he had the whole, um, student committee around wellness and student pressures and things like that. And what concerned me last month and still concerns me is that when we talked about adding this course. Um, there was no mention about some of those other factors and some of those other pressures that whenever we add a course, or whenever we add a track. The, um, that kind of pressure is going to happen, and it's going to be felt. I mean, just look at the conversations that we've been having about how, you know, college opportunities and this and that. And all the kids, the eighth graders are hearing that, and they're all thinking, well, now I have to do this. And this is a course that, um, this is a course that very few, if any, of my understanding, is high schools in the country add. Um, that's terrific that we have students that are able to do it, and I do not want to, I'm voting yes, because I do want, I want to limit choices for, for those students. But that also should give us pause, because we have a lot more students who are now going to feel pressure to do that. And how we're supporting students to appro, make appropriate choices, to what Cody was saying, I think has to be an important factor in this. The, um, and it's a larger conversation than I think we as a board need to take up at a later point. The, uh, at some point, I don't know when, maybe so, I think some point around 2019, 99, we seem to think it was okay for high school kids to stay up till. One o'clock in the morning doing homework. The, um, that's, that's silly, right? So I think there were other things and there are other institutional pressures that we need to, we need to push back. And sometimes as an institution, it's our role, um, to put those limits in place. So that's, that's really just my, my concern here. But I don't want to shortchange, um, the students, the, 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 the small group of students who really, you know, are, are capable and should have this opportunity.
Christina?
Um, I a hundred percent agree, Mike, that, you know, once we create the pathway, students are going to feel compelled. To follow that pathway through college pressures, peer pressures, what the like. So I would caution and urge the administration to really focus on when kids are doing these triple jumps as in middle school. Um, for, to guide them appropriately. Um, so that's perhaps maybe part of the transition in eighth grade, ninth grade, that we should be thinking about a little bit more in terms of the math path. Andrew, I know we, we had a conversation about this, just in terms of, so it, you're, you're assuring us that it'll only run with the same number of students as any other course would run. At the high school in the math department, like this computer science class, correct?
That's correct.
Um, and just, just in terms of, so we're talking about a course that we are not necessarily even sure is going to get developed, or be needed next year. In terms of your allocation of staff time and resources to developing a curriculum for it. Could you just kind of speak about that and just the amount of time that's going to be involved in that? And obviously, if there's an accompanying cost?
Yeah, you know, a lot of work was already done to put the proposal together. We have a couple of people that have worked on it along with me. And so, uh, you know, I imagine if we are fortunate enough to have the board, um, approve it tonight, you know, as I outlined in the, uh, proposal. We would spend some time, uh, this spring and summer, um, fleshing out the, um, actual course syllabus in, in greater detail, so that we have it, uh, for the future. Obviously, we want to make sure that we, um, have those front-facing and, and backward-facing, uh, curriculum documents. I don't imagine that it would, uh, be very costly, uh, maybe a couple of days of, of growth and development. Um, as far as, uh, you know, bringing maybe two or three teachers together. So I, I do think the, the cost would be sitting, you know, under a thousand dollars if I had to put a number on it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and just, um, I know Cody has his point about allowing more students, and I agree with you wholeheartedly that the act. You, you, you really have to be cautious before doing things that are going to dilute the value of your Ad Calc class, which is an exceptionally good class. Um, it's extremely helpful for any student who wants to study math in college, even if it's not an AP class in terms of the preparation. What it allows them to place into, place out of, or even to take a course in college that they've already taken in high school to ease their college, you know, for semester college burden. Thank you.
In the interest of try to bring, trying to bring this to a vote, Karen, can we make a brief comment, then Cody will follow quickly?
Sorry. Um, yeah, no, I was just going to say, one of the things that I had, uh, asked, uh, Mr. Byrne ahead of time, and I thought maybe it might be helpful is. Is the number of students that do take, um, Ad Calc, um, and are signed up, you know, currently and signed up for next year. Um, knowing the number of students there are, uh, in every grade, it's a small percentage. I, no, I'll let him answer. I don't see that it's going to drive, uh, students that really are not, uh, truly focused on this higher level math. To, to stress themselves out that they have to, to get to this level. Um, I think this is for a very specifically, uh, a minded student. It's been asked for, for, for years for, for higher level math, uh, to be taught within our schools. So, um, do I, I don't know, uh, if you want to mention how many students are currently signed up for Ad Calc?
Yeah, right, right now, we were only able to run one section, uh, for the current school year. So we, we have just under 30 students, um, for Ad Calc presently. Um, but it looks like next year, uh, we're trending in the same direction that we have for the last couple of years. And we, we should have approximately 40 to 45 students, um, who would sit through Ad Calc, uh, next year.
Okay, Cody?
Just real quick on Mike's concern about kids feeling the pressure to do this. If you don't have it as, if you don't have Ad Calc as a requirement, it goes from being a linear step, no pun intended, to an alternative. And I think it can actually reduce the pressure. Um, it is not, it's an easier class, I think, than Ad Calc. So, uh, having taken a year of linear algebra, um, the, uh, I just, like, I think you can end up in a better situation than the current tracking. Because if you create a lot of choices, it reduces the pressure to go down a particular path.
Thanks, Cody. I'm going to try to wrap this up. I was at the Lions Club breakfast on Saturday morning, and Barbara O'Neil approached me. And she insisted that we approve this course. Otherwise, I was feeling I was going to get detention. So I'm going to call the question. Uh, all in favor of approving this course, please raise your hand. I believe that's unanimous, eight zero. Thank you. Thank you for checking, though. Okay, now we're going to go with the graduation date. I move, we approve the June 15th, 2023 as a date for Greenwich High School graduation. Dr. Jones?
Hopefully, this will be the fastest item of the night. Let's make our seniors happy, their families happy. And just as a reminder, their law did change just a few years ago, so that when you set the graduation date, even if we do have a storm or something that comes up, we do not have to change graduations. So this will be set in stone.
Or Michael secretly seconded it. I know you're asking for that, but he was secretly seconded.
Actually, I think Kathleen seconded it for you. Okay. I have a couple of questions. I know this should be an easy one. I have, sorry, I have a couple of questions. So the first question I have, and it goes also into our next motion that we're going to have regarding the, uh, last day of school. Um, the first, so let me start with that. So I know that we don't take Juneteenth off, and we are going into it. And we, the last day of school is then going to be Juneteenth for some. And it is a state and federal holiday, and I did some checking, and the school districts that are still in school. Take that day off as opposed to days that not. So therefore, I raised the issue that we are one of the very few districts that are in school that I, well, actually, I couldn't find any district. That was in school on that day that didn't take this day off. So I raised that as concern one, and what message does that send to our African-American community that we are not taking Juneteenth? Also, because it is a federal and state holiday, it, it becomes a three-day weekend. And you are having graduation on a Thursday night, when people might want to get out of town early for a three-day weekend. And you have the graduation party that's in late, that takes late on a Thursday, and people can't get out of town because they can't feel, because they can't get out early enough. And therefore, I raise concerns that perhaps graduation date, which isn't necessarily tied, as far as I could tell. Uh, to the end of school, plus most seniors aren't coming to school anyway, because they all have their internships. If it makes sense to move the graduation date up a few days, so we don't run into a Juneteenth three-day weekend problem. And, um, yeah, that's my issue.
So I would say on Juneteenth, I, it, different districts are handling it differently, just like Veterans Day. I mean, I think you'll find, like, we're actually in school on Veterans Day. So I think we look at it where if we're going to be in school, we'll make sure that we have programming, so that we're educating our students about what that day actually is.
That's actually part of the requirement that, um, Governor Lamont put into law, that if you're going to be in, that you have to have an educational program. And if that's the case, I think that becomes part of the curriculum, which would then need to become, that the board would have to look at as well. But that's a separate issue. But my other point is, I know Stanford is off on Juneteenth. I know Bridgeport is off on Juneteenth, the other major cities and districts in the state. So I just raised that as an issue. Maybe we don't want to change it here, fine. But I would ask that we take a hard look at this, if we're going to be, continue to be in school on June 19th, as to what this says to a greater population, that we're not taking that day off. When others do, and also presents, like I said earlier, I think may have an issue of three-day weekend issues for certain people who have it off. And teachers whose students may be off in different districts.
Thank you. I'd like to call the question.
Just, just, well, I guess this kind of goes to the point. Um, it kind of depends on if we move it or not, because we are supposed to have our June Board of Ed meeting on June 15th. So we would have to set a new night for our June Board of Ed meeting if we move it. Well, if we, well, we're double booked, it would be a school function that we, you know, if we can't be at graduation and here at Central Middle School at the same time. I know, and that's why I'm answering sarcastically.
Yes, Tony, one more thing, Dr. Jones.
So just keep in mind that, that while it's incredibly difficult, we are supposed to, with integrity, set graduation as close to the last day of school, even for seniors. So we do have to be cognizant that you move it back to Tuesday, we're supposed to get the seniors back in school for the rest of the week. And I just, I just want to share that, because that's not going to happen. Um, and that's right. Um, and so I just, I share that. We also would, we would be tabling this until next month, because I would have to go back, check with Karen Foster, you know, check with Ralph. Make sure it's not conflicting with something else. That our high school graduation, as you know, is enormous, takes a tremendous amount of booking. They have to make sure things are available and, you know, that, the thing, the rentals.
Christina, you want to make a final comment?
Yeah, just because I, in past years, we've done it as a first read, and then we finally vote in April on the graduation date. So I guess the question is, can we follow that old practice, given this other information about Juneteenth? I guess that's, that's just my question in terms of you were about to call the question. So that was my response to your calling.
Well, I'll tell you, I have a senior who's graduating, and boy, oh, boy, is this date very popular amongst the graduating seniors. They were so celebratory that this was the date. So, uh, I, I would not even want to delay this vote, because it seems like, uh, uh, we would have an uprising in the, uh, the graduating community if we did.
I was just more concerned about all these ancillary things, that I, I don't care when graduation is, because I don't have a senior, other than we show up.
Thank you for your concern. Uh, so I'd like to call the question. Uh, all in favor? Cody, you're, uh, well, so that's.
I'm in favor.
Okay, so.
As am I.
All against? Abstentions? One abstention.
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions, okay. So that's six, zero, two. That passes.
I love when the votes go with non-political groupings.
Christina, could you read the next motion? Yeah, thank you.
Um, motion to approve June 16th as the last day of school for sixth and ninth grade students, and June 19th as the last day of, for all other grades. Director, but Tony, the last day of school action is dependent upon no additional days off, and if so, the calendar will be extended one day for each day that schools are closed.
I will, second down, Lori, Lori has a second, I think you could be the second, or fantastic. Discussion, Michael?
I, I have to say, I have a, I do have some agita around, um, being in school on June 19th. The, um, and I hear about programming. I wonder how extensive programming can be if it's also the last day of school, in all honesty, award assemblies and things like that.
I think it's, it, to me, it reminds me of Veterans Day, having been in districts where we're in school and when we're out, the vast majority of our students will get nothing. Um, unless the school addresses it, and I, in, in that, what I see when I watch our Veterans Day across the district, I know a lot of you have attended them. They are phenomenal, and I, I trust our staff will, would make it a meaningful day.
Christina?
And Mike, just historically, since I'm older than you are, I don't want to say that in the numbers. But, um, there was a big outcry back in the day when we started going to school on Veterans Day and Columbus Day, um, particularly Veterans Day. So, and it was about appropriate responses and activities, and to Dr. Jones's point, I think it, it's worked out very well.
That's fine. I think the, um, look, this is a new holiday, and maybe it's something that, that evolves. I, I don't think we would win the argument that, um, we could stay in school on Martin Luther King, Martin Luther King Day and do educational programming. So I think the, um, moving forward after this year, I think it's something we need to think about, in all honesty.
Okay, with no more comments, I will call the question. All in favor, raise your hand. And that's, uh, seven in favor. All against? One against. That's seven, one, zero. That motion passes. Okay, now it's time for a discussion item. We have the Western Middle School Soil Update. Dr. Jones?
I think this one's going to be fairly quick. We're excited about where we are. Dan, do you want to come forward and, and share the information that you shared today? No, come on. We're, we're making such great progress. I actually got my name on the, on the permit sheet today. They were working on sending that to Hartford to Deep, so we're really excited.
So, uh, we did get some, we recently received what we're considering some favorable news from the regulators associated with the Western Middle School field. Um, the latest discussions with Connecticut DEP have provided information that suggests. A limitation to the site-wide mass excavation of two feet. So if you remember, the whole plan of the remediation was to remove two feet of soil in mass across the entire field, ship it out. And bring back new fill. Uh, the recent change in that is that the regulators have, are going to allow us to just strip away. The topsoil, which is, let's just say, six inches for an average, um, and remove that from the site. Uh, that's going to save us a significant amount of time and effort. Uh, it doesn't mean we're, we're changing, um. Uh, any of the risk profile. It just means that we're approaching the project similar to what's going on at the high school. The change in the plan could provide relief to the project by lessening truck traffic, decreasing estimated QB yards of contaminated fill to be disposed. Reducing the amount of fill brought to the site, and most importantly, should cut down the schedule as to when the fields will be reopened to the public. Which is the big, big news. Um, also of significant importance is that the team associated with the project. Continues to have positive discussions and feedback from meetings with town of Greenwich agencies, as well as representatives from the neighboring bakery. Uh, we've met with the tree warden, uh, to discuss planting and tree removal options. We've met with Parks and Rec, uh, to discuss ancillary equipment needed, meaning goals, um, flags, uh, for field alignment. Uh, the actual way the fields are laid out. Uh, we've met with the First Selectmen's Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities to discuss roots. Uh, uh, access, accessible routes to and from the field. We've met with the, uh, the school administration to, to discuss access to the fields during construction. We've met with the bakery plant manager to discuss access to the site via the bakery-owned driveway. And the GPS security department to discuss additional site lighting along the walkway that, uh, runs the entire length of the field. So all in all, the, the project is moving forward. Um, I think we're in good shape. I don't want to throw any dates or dollars at you tonight, but it's just, uh, an update that things are looking good.
Dan, that's good news. Thank you for that. Of course, I'll offer my help, but I know you'll say, no, go away, as usual. So, but I will help if you need me to do anything. Thank you. Anyone else have any? Anyone else have any questions of Dan? Okay, thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Okay, next action items are all Blaze. The special education out of district interim request. Motion to approve the interim funding request as presented, Blaze. Do we have a second, Joe?
Point of order, should we actually put the dollar amount in the motion?
I just read it off.
I know, I know, but that's my question. I'm, it's a question, Mike Atanasio, are you out there? Like.
I can't answer that. Well, let's go what we have. And we'll get a second and we'll see how that.
Okay.
I'll happily second it.
Thank you.
Well, I won't say happily, but I'll second it.
Blaze, go ahead.
Hi, so yeah, so we've got a number of items here to discuss. The first interim is the interim, this was the one for special ed, you just said, Joe, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I got a lot of my interims here today. So yeah, so basically the, as you know, so the special ed in my financial report, we are currently between the total out of district tuition program and the special education settlement line. The net of that is currently a negative of one million, fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars for legally obligated special education expenses. We're currently carrying this, this cost. As you, as the board knows, the special education excess cost sharing grant, which helps supports this program is state revenue. That program goes directly to the town, that revenue. We, we, we can't access that revenue. So the way to access it is through an interim. Through Dr. H's work, we are receiving actually significantly more, even significantly more than budgeted. So that, that we only had budgeted nine hundred thousand. We're on track this year to be between a one point four and one point six million. Last year also, just for reference, nine hundred thousand was budgeted for the program. We had a big deficit, but the, the Board of Ed absorbed that whole thing. But the Town General Fund had been reimbursed again, one point three million in that excess cost program. So I will let Dr. H, who is here, kind of articulate a little bit more background on the actual expenses and how the program's running. I will say that we are already absorbing a number of costs. And in addition to this, we, we, the district will be, we have a large negative in substitutes. We've got a large negative in electricity already and facilities of overtime were in the red. So it's not like we have areas of cash that we are flush with that we can use to cover these legally obligated special education expenses. Dr. H, I think you might want to add some insight onto the actual program budget status.
Sure, so when we met a month ago, maybe a month and a half, at our executive session, we kind of talked about some of the, some of the costs that have come, you know, that have come through the department. You know, there is, just in kind of in perspective, when I started a year and a half ago, the budget for this fiscal year was being presented within starting just a few months. And it kind of took us last year to get everything settled. And then we had a few high cost students that got added to that. So it's not that we are mismanaging the money or we're, you know, having a large number of students. A lot of this is finally getting to a balance where we know exactly what students we have, how much this costs and trying to even it out. And as Blaze said, we, we've been able to bring, bring in through the excess cost, really what some of that deficit is, but the money goes directly to the town. And so asking for that back to be able to help cover the cost that, of the revenue that it's actually generated from.
Yeah, great. This is, this is a problem kind of specific to Greenwich with the way that the revenue is structured, specifically this revenue program. And so it's just a process where I reached out to the town to see if we could receipt the excess revenue directly back to the program over the nine hundred thousand. Town finance is not interested in doing it that way. They want us to follow the, the, the normal interim pathway approach. And so here we are.
Thank you. Karen?
It, just so I can understand this. So we're asking for an interim of a little over a million dollars. But we're saying that the sped excess cost sharing grant that we get, we think is estimated to be somewhere between one point three and one point six million. And that amount of money goes to the general revenue fund for that, the Town General Fund. So they're getting that money. So what we're asking them is really just to pay us back a million of what we've already collected through your hard work in the excess cost sharing grant. Do I have that right?
You have that mostly right, except for the fact though, that the town, I think logic would be on this piece that they budgeted nine hundred thousand for that revenue against an expense model. So i- in the mill rate, in theory, they were building the budget expecting nine hundred thousand in revenue. And so it's, it's the excess over the nine hundred thousand is how some people would view it. But yes, the Town General Fund is being reimbursed one point three to one point six million. And we are essentially asking for those, those funds to go back to the program to help cover the deficit, which is how it would typically, typically be arranged in almost every district in Connecticut.
Understood, thanks.
Nobody else? Okay, without further seeing no more questions, I will call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. That appears to be unanimous eight zero. Thank you, I like eight zeros.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Dr. H, Blaze, you're still in the hot seat. We have the Havermeyer Building Flood Interim. Motion to approve the interim funding request as presented for Havermeyer Building Response and Repair. Do I have a second? Oh, Laura's going to second that. Thank you, Laura. That's awful nice of you.
Yeah, so this is an interim funding request that we are seeking to submit for five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The background is that most of you are aware, but on February fourth, we had a pipe burst in the upper floor of the Havermeyer Building. Two offices on the upper floor. The boardroom, as you're all unfortunately well aware, and the entire print shop were severely damaged. Those damaged areas all contained hazardous materials, including asbestos and lead paint. So the areas had to be abated. And like the boardroom was completely gutted to back down to the studs on all sides of the boardroom. In that room, we had the, all the Board of Ed's tech equipment for what we're doing right now was in there. All the furniture was lost and contaminated. And then the print shop furniture was lost. So there's two interims related to the, for simplicity, there's two interims related to the Havermeyer flood. One is for the rebuilding of the building and the furniture, which is a very straightforward one, especially with insurance. The second one is the print shop, which we'll talk about in a minute. But that's specific to the actual print shop equipment because most of the print shop equipment was lost. So for this first one, we're talking five forty-five. It's, it's broken down on the attached document, but we're coordinating closely. Dan's team has been great. They responded immediately and since then they've got up and running. The town's risk manager, Megan Damato, we are working very closely with. The insurance adjuster has been out. For this interim, the town, for this, we were advised originally, we thought there was a deductible of two hundred and fifty thousand. Megan reached out to Dan, Tony and I to notify us that for this incident, it was going to be a one hundred thousand dollar deductible. So the, the way that the insurance funding works, which most of us are unfortunately well aware of, is that it goes to the, the town's fund and the town, similar to the last conversation we just had, has us come for the funding. And so this is the funding mechanism to access the, the necessary repairs. Dan's budget is currently carrying this, we're carrying this as a district, this entire repair so far. So this is a bit time sensitive. We got to get it over there to get the insurance reimbursement. And the reason that these were with the finance committee on Tuesday, when we talked about these with the finance, with, with the BOE Finance Committee, is because the RTM does not hear any items other than budget in May. So we have to also get it to them by the April meeting. So that's, that's the background. If there's questions about the specific repair, I think Dan's still there, but.
Well, I heard you say something nice about Dan. He's gone, so you don't have to keep doing that. And so.
Oh, good, okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So what you're saying is this, this money we're asking for the town will be reimbursed to us by the insurance company less a hundred thousand dollars. Is that what you said?
That's, that's, yep. That's what should happen.
Thank you. Any questions? I see no questions. So let's, let's take.
One question.
Thank you. Go ahead, Karen.
Blaze, what is the timeline for getting reimbursed by the insurance company? And do we anticipate any haggles by the insurance company with respect to the amount and what they will be willing to reimburse?
Great questions. The, so we're, we're, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the timeline. I will find that out. That's why the town has it this way so that we can access the funds right away and then they'll get reimbursed directly. The town will actually get reimbursed directly by the insurance company. The re, one of the reasons that the building one is separate is, or we have a high confidence of full reimbursement. We're working really closely with Megan. When we talk about the print shop equipment, that one's a little less straightforward. And I think there, there's a little more of a gray area on that one. This one, we're fairly confident. Everything is, is fairly, is pretty straightforward with the, with the insurance and with Megan and everybody on the actual building damage.
Okay, and the other question I have then, and maybe this goes to the other one, but is it one hundred thousand for? Like, would they be, sorry? It's getting late.
And it's one incident.
It's, that's what, that was my question, is one incident. So even though these are two separate approval for motions in respect to the financial piece, will only be out technically, if everything goes as planned, a hundred thousand. And the insurance company would pay four hundred and forty-two thousand in one and then whatever the other one is. But it's looked at as one incident and we would only be a hundred thousand for both of these to combine.
Yes, one incident, one insurance claim, two different interims because of the, the nature of the two different interim, the, the way the town funds them. But one, one incident, one property claim.
Any more questions? Seeing none, I would like to say, I'd like to take a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. That looks like one of those unanimous votes. How cool is that? Eight zero, thank you very much. Next one is the Print Shop Interim Funding Request. Motion to approve the interim funding request as presented for the Havermeyer Building Flood Print Shop Equipment. Do I have a second? I'm, I'm going to go with Laura again. Thank you, Laura. Okay, any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Blaze, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll present this one quickly. I, it's a little more complicated. We talked about it at the Finance Committee on Tuesday, a little bit more in length. But essentially, the thought process behind submitting the interim is that the timing of the end of the fiscal year and the fact that the RTM doesn't hear anything in May is why it's before you right now for discussion. The equipment all in to basically rebuild the print shop is two hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The difference on that interim request right now, which is partially unknown, is also the fact that the print shop lost all paper, all ink, e- everything in the print shop was, was lost. We're currently, as of this week, so Jonathan Sopranowitz, who oversees the, the print shop team, we set up a approach where the print shop staff is currently working, but we have an outs, an outsourced vendor actually doing the printing right now in Stanford for a very low cost. This has been a lot to try to get a print shop back up and running so that we still have the function going. That is operating out of Stanford. We'll see how it goes. It just started yesterday. So that's exciting news, but this interim is before you. I could see, you know, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks Blaze. I do have a quick question. If we do get the interim from the, from the town and the insurance company pays us, do we have to give it back to the town? I'm just kidding. Any real questions? Karen, oh, they are. Go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, I just have one quick question because I know that the print shop is utilized by ourselves as well as the town. It's a shared resource. So I just was wondering, I mean, you know, it's, is it specifically covered under our insurance? Is that why we're requesting the full amount of funds needed to replace? Or is this something that's a shared expense with the town?
It is the town's insurance, other way around, town's insurance and fully budgeted by the Board of Education. It's in our budget, which is why we're the ones that have to ask for the interim. And we actually eat all the excess cost. It's a separate point, we can talk about it.
That's a discussion for another day. Well, we're only, we're only focused on putting what we have back. Okay. Thank you.
Hey Blaze. Oh, wait, sorry, I went over.
Yeah, good, Cody.
What's the, if we like the current temper, the temporary setup we have for this print shop that we're using? Does that mean that we potentially don't need this? Or like if, if we approve this, does that mean that we're for sure rebuilding the print shop? Or is there a chance still that we may want to go fully outsource?
Hey Blaze, Blaze, you want to jump in there for a second? We're having conversations and I'll, I'll hand it over to Dr. Jones about doing some analytics on that, Cody. Very good question. So we're going to decide within this short period of time now that we're outsourcing the printing. It's certainly not a growing business. We hope it's not a growing business printing. So I don't think personally, I don't think we want to be in the printing business. So, and, and Dr. Jones agrees, we're going to do some analytics on just that point.
So how, how does that impact us for, from a voting standpoint?
I think that you could, you know, you could withdraw the motion and you could, you could do what the BET does, which is condition the interim upon execution of the interim funding upon a analysis of the outsourcing cost, something like that.
I would be in favor of that approach.
Well, Blaze, tell me this, and I agree with Cody. If we claim the insurance claim and we get the payment, do we have to take that money and put it back into the printing equipment?
Well, remember, all the insurance money goes back to the town. So that, that would be another piece of it. What I asked Megan, and I do not have an answer yet, is if we, that is that question exactly? If we do not rebuild the print shop, does this, does the town still get reimbursed for all the lost equipment? And I, and I do not have an answer to that yet from Megan, but I did ask that question because I think it's a good question.
Well, it depends on the policy, but yes, sometimes you have to discount if you take the money rather than the rebuild on a home. You get a discount to not rebuild the home. So it all depends on the policy. But now, do, do we think, are you advising us to approve this motion and, and take action on the other things we're talking about and get answers there? Or should we hold the motion till we get the answers?
I may let Dr. Jones weigh in. I think from just my initial reaction, it would be to maybe approve it with the conditions that we discussed so that we could still move forward if needed on it, presenting back to you. But also I think you could do it either way.
I'll go to Christina.
I think we should, it's better to approve it with the conditions just because of the RTM timing. Because if the analytics show that we really want to replace the equipment and we don't get it on the RTM call for April, now we're waiting till June.
Do you want me to withdraw my motion? You reframe it in a different way and then move forward on that?
I guess, well, do we want? I guess, well, do we want to put the conditions on, or do we want to let the BET put the conditions on it? Because that's the other alternative, is we just vote on it and we communicate with them that if you want, because by the time it gets to them and gets to the RTM, we will have probably performed. I don't know how quickly, Tony, you would, guys would do the analytics. We may have the data, so we may not necessarily worry about phrasing how to do the condition in the spur of the moment. Your call, Joe.
Well, I would say we move forward with the motion, and we, these conversations are going on, so we know we could change the flow of cash if need be. So with the understanding that we're gonna continue these discussions, I say we, I'll call the question and have a vote. All in favor? Cody?
I'm not in favor.
Okay. All against? One against abstention? No. Karen, did you not vote? Oh, sorry, I missed it. It's getting late. I do apologize. So what number do we have there? Thank you.
And, and thank you. That was the logic for doing the interim separately, so that we, if needed, could ask for one of those to be conditioned and put into a separate fund from the other work.
Thank you. Now we have a, two discussion, oh, two discussion items for Blaze. A financial staffing report?
Yeah, so the fi- the financial report, it's really late, so I won't repeat the whole report, and I did get that one posted on time. So I'll basically just say, the, the main, on most of the finance, the main concern right now is the special education budget, which is putting pressure on everything else. We've received some relief from the penalties that were negotiated by Dr. Carabillo and Elmer, who, for all of the debacle that went on back with the bus company in September through October and November, those penalties are going to be close to almost a million dollars that they've negotiated to help pay for both, all of the extra costs we had to pay for. And also will be providing us some budgetary relief. That is how we are able to help absorb the additional electric cost. And as well as we have the ARP funding this year to help with the substitute budget, as well as the facilities overtime. So otherwise, we're, we're relatively on track contingent upon that interim for special ed you just approved. Revenue continues to be a little bit strong. The Food Service Lunch Fund, had our financial meeting with the food service team. Free lunch, it was resumed as of March first back, so we, we have free lunch again for the remainder of the year. Those meals are being reimbursed, I think, at four dollars and fifteen cents again per meal. And so that should provide us with both a great program for our community and a healthy fund balance for the school lunch fund. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions? Blaze, just a quick one, the one I always ask. We've, we have the, this funding or this federal money that we've received, state money, whatever money you want to call it. We've, we assigned that money to something, or there's some still outstanding. Can you please, we talked about it a little bit earlier, can you just readdress that? We're not going to be giving any money back.
Dr. Jones and I are working hard with the cabinet to get every grand dollar spent.
What's, what's unspent at this point or unassigned?
Primarily the unassigned, well, the, the unspent pieces. We have a large portion of these grants that are salaries. So the salaries are carrying every month, so that, that's, that's the largest piece of why you see the balance for the grants that are going to expire.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none? Well, we're not putting it to a vote. So, okay, great. That is us good with Blaze. Thank you, Blaze. Oh, we have the transfer, sorry. Budget transfer, Blaze?
Yeah, so no actionable transfers, just informational budget transfers. They're on there. Most of them are across, are, are within major object code, one hundreds to one hundreds. You can see that they were primarily, three of the four transfers were being used to fund the contract or services from focused on learning. And then the fourth one is an informational transfer from special education, just to pay for legal services for attorney fees.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Blaze.
Thank you.
Agenda planning. Karen, did you say there was something you'd like to put on the agenda? Did you mention something during the week?
I have a couple of things that I'd like to put, take up to put on the agenda. The first is by next meeting on April twentieth, we should be in a position from the Policy Committee to have first reads on a host of policies that I'll be getting, that we'll be getting to you. So I want to make sure that that gets on. Also, I wanted to get an update on the, our plan for racial imbalance. I know that at our last meeting, well, the last meeting with the state, I believe they asked for a plan to be put into place. I'd like to understand where we're at with that putting forward. What's our timeline? When will information get to the board about looking at that? So I think that needs to be addressed. The other thing, and I've said it before, I know generally what the reaction is going to be, I think, in regards to this. But I do think for proper process and procedure, since we've been talking a lot about that today, the superintendent's goals were never voted on by the board. We've done that in the past, and I do think it is important to continue that. We haven't done it. I realize on June first, we have her evaluation. However, I do think that we need to continue with the practice that we've always done. So I would ask that those be in for an action item on April third, on our April meeting. And I do think we need to talk about moving now our June fifteenth meeting and coming up with a new date for that, which I would just suggest bumping it down a week and not moving it up because we would be having, that just doesn't work. We would be having two meetings back to back on week. So I think I would suggest we move it to the following Thursday.
Okay, so anything else we want to add to the agenda?
Well, I think.
Something being added to the.
No, no, but with all the two items on the Hamav Field and the sprinklers.
That's right.
Need to get put on in April. Vis a VR board meeting in June, my suggestion would be rather than moving by a week, I'd move it by a day to just earlier that week, just because I think kids get out of school and, you know, that's kind of prime vacation time for people. And I think, you know, ideally, if we keep it in the same week, maybe Tuesday or Wednesday, if we don't want to do back to back nights. That's a suggestion.
The reading waiver.
Yeah, that was requested.
Oh, on it for agenda planning.
Yeah, sure.
Reading waiver. Okay. Michael?
I had hope, that hope springs eternal, that the Strategic Plan Committee will be in place to bring the board goal stock back next month.
Laura?
So the Vice Chair of the CMS Building Committee likes to stay up late and watch meetings and wants me to let the board know the CMS municipal improvement needs to be addressed in late April or early May. So we may want to put that on the agenda for our future meetings.
Is that just as simple as what we did for Old Greenwich? Just authorizing to move forward?
My guess is yes, because there have been so many meetings at the town level between P and Z, DPW, all those slam, CSG, all of those parties have been at the table for weeks now on the MI issue.
Okay. Anything else to add to the, this now very crowded agenda? Yes, Karen?
I also have a question whether or not we can put it on as an agenda item. And this goes to the point, and maybe there's a different way to address it. But given that Mr. Boland has resigned and as of the end of June, I think it would be beneficial to get an update. I know that there was a report done by the, by the administration, or an investigation done by the administration. I think it would be beneficial if we could get some update on that.
Boland update.
Is that appropriate for executive session?
Well, it's the findings, right? So there was particular findings that were done that I thought that, forgive me, it's late, I'm forgetting the name, Dr. No, 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 we did. Thank you. The Dr. Bud had done in connection with his investigation that I thought was, had been completed. But we were waiting to determine, you know, one, the status of Mr. Boland's employment, as well as the other state investigations that were going on. And it would be helpful to get an understanding of what Dr. Bud had concluded in his report.
Okay. Anything else before Laura makes her motion?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that. Thank you, Laura. We're adjourned. Oh, sorry. All in favor of adjourning, please put your hand up. Thank you. That's unanimous, of course.